Well, we would like to welcome everyone this evening to the joint meeting of the Urban Renewal Agency
Board and the McMinnville Urban Renewal Agency Committee, and we will call this meeting to order. We welcome those that are visiting with us, staff and committee members of both of the Urban Renewal Committee and the Board this evening. We have, I think, a very exciting presentation tonight, something we've been working on for quite a while that's going to give us some insight. So with that being said, we're going to need to call on Planning Director Heather Richards to start our presentation on the parking study, and we'll just kind of go from there. So Heather?
Yes, so--
Rick's joining us at the table, so Rick Williams will be with us, and we will be listening to him a little later. So Heather?
Yes, and actually Rick's the brains behind this whole study, so I'm just going to introduce Rick. But Mayor and councilors and MIRAC members, we started talking about parking a little over a year ago, and there's always been concern about constrained parking in the downtown, and we need new inventory. And we had a discussion at MIRAC that maybe first we needed a utilization study to really understand what the parking situation was, where the needs were before we started investing significant resources into new inventory. I've worked with Rick before in other communities. I think his team does an excellent job. They come in, they do the data study, they work with the community and make recommendations on how to move forward in such a way that achieves what the community is trying to achieve, but does it in a fiscally prudent and thoughtful way. The study's taken longer than most people anticipated because we deliberately chose to choose two days for the data analysis in the summer because we wanted to be able to ensure we were picking up some peak times. We picked one weekday and then one weekend day so we could understand what it looked like in terms of tourism influx on the weekends versus the weekdays. Then we went through a process of analyzing that data. We had two public meetings to present it and collect information, collect comments from the public about, well, did you consider this or that? One of the things that was brought up, actually Marilyn brought it up in one of our meetings, was to really be thoughtful about a residential parking program too because we have residents downtown, and we want to continue to encourage that. And then we went through a process of drafting a study that's in front of you tonight. MIRAC reviewed it and recommended it to you at their meeting in March, on March 7th. There is a fourth memo that actually we're not providing to you tonight. It's a confidential memo that does talk about where would be good opportunities to look at new parking inventory. It does discuss real estate acquisitions, and so there is a small group comprised of both city councilors and MIRAC members that have been working with a consultant on that and are familiar with that, and will use that moving forward as well. So with that, I want to introduce Rick Williams. He's going to go over the data analysis, their study and recommendations, and leave some time for questions and answers. We scheduled about half an hour for this dialogue, so we give everyone enough time to really get their questions answered.
Thanks Heather. First, Mayor and councilors and MIRAC members, we really appreciate the opportunity to be here. We also truly appreciate the opportunity of being able to--
Can you pull your microphone?
Sure. We also really appreciate the opportunity to have been able to do this study. McMinnville's always been a city we wanted to come to because of its Main Street reputation, and so we finally got to do it, and I thank Heather for that opportunity as well. So we've got a pretty full list of things to talk about, and I know we have limited time. And so if I seem to be too fast, please stop me because I want to get through the data, get through the recommendations, and really just hear back from you. But the data is the important part of this, and I think that's one of the reasons that McMinnville did this right, was rather than jump into strategies first, that we first understand the dynamics of what's unique about the McMinnville system, and then tailor the approach to the data that we found. This is the study boundary. It's a large boundary, and we've analyzed it in a number of different ways. But as you can see, Fifth to First on the north and south, Adams-Bircher on the west, Logan Three Mile Lane on the east, so a large study area. As Heather indicated, we did two study days. One, and we also waited, when the contract was let, we waited to get into the summer because we wanted to make sure we had really robust activity that people are used to and that they experience commonly in McMinnville. We wanted school to be in session particularly on the weekday study day to see the impacts of the university and of the college, and see the impact of typical school activity on the system. We also then delayed into August so they could pick up a typical summer day when people are out wine tasting, for instance, on a weekend, and just coming to McMinnville to enjoy everything that you have here. Overall, it's a fairly large parking supply for a small city. Two thousand eight hundred and forty-five total stalls. Only seven hundred and ninety-eight of those stalls, though, about 28% of your supply is on-street. The rest of the supply is in off-street facilities located on 75 unique off-street parking sites. So there's a lot of off-street parking in McMinnville. We surveyed about 2,500 of all the stalls in that supply, about 87%. 100% of the on-street system was surveyed, and about 81% of the off-street stalls were surveyed. So we think we have a very valid sample and can make extrapolations to the larger supply because of the large sample that we took. We also made sure that on-street and off-street, we sampled all of the supply that's in public control, that's owned by the city. Real quickly, this is the on-street system, and like I said, I'm kind of pushing this, so slow me down if you need me to. But I put some red circles around what I think is important. When we do an inventory of a downtown, we look at what the feel of the on-street system is. You know, who is it really for, and how is it formatted? What's unique about McMinnville is 62% of your supply is actually formatted for all-day parking, or we would call that unregulated no-limit parking. That's unusual for high-destination downtowns where you want turnover, but you also want to size your system and your time limit your system, which we'll talk to about in a minute, to customers. You don't want to give them not enough time to stay, but you don't want unregulated parking because it's difficult to control employees, to be just honest. And so that was unique about your inventory. It seems to be formatted to a longer-term stay, which means that employees could be parking in areas that customers would like to park in but can't because there's a car there all day. So that was unusual about your supply. The off-street system, again, and I'll show you a map here in a second. What's interesting about the off-street system is how much of it there is and how it's geographically distributed across your downtown. And I'll show you a map here in a second. We sampled 42 of the 75 sites, about 81% of the supply. In your lots where you have a two-hour designation, we also took license plate numbers so that we could quantify and calculate how long people are actually staying on-street and in your off-street facilities that the city controls. The rest of the off-street system, we just took occupancy counts. This is the map of your off-street supply, and you see in the report, there's a table, a very long table. All of these are uniquely numbered, so you could find the number and then get a sense of how that specific lot is operating on, the survey days, and when its own unique peak hour is. But as you can see, again, with all those green site boxes, there's a lot of supply spread across the downtown. That's actually a good thing in the long run because, you know, in some downtowns we go to, parking off-street is clustered in certain areas, and so there's not necessarily a good connection from the on-street system that may get constrained to an off-street facility. As you can see, you have a pretty broad distribution of off-street opportunities. Doesn't necessarily mean that it's available for all users. It just means you have a good supply of parking, and that's something we'll talk about when we get into the strategies. Real quickly, when we measure your supply, we want to measure it against an industry-based performance standard, so we can say, do you have a problem or do you not have a problem? And what the industry uses is what's called the 85% rule. And if you have a supply of parking, whether it's an individual lot or an on-street parking system, or even a block face, if it's over 85% occupied, the red triangle in that larger triangle, then it's constrained. It means that people feel that it's not available to them, and it can create perceptions and ideas that can influence their behavior. If a large supply of parking is over 85%, people may decide not to come back. They say it's just too difficult to park here. What you want to try to manage your system to is to the orange box in the middle. What that says is that between, generally at the 85, just under 85%, it means that on a block face, one or two stalls are always open, and in an off-street facility, about 10% to 15% of the supply is kind of always empty, so it can fluctuate with demand. And people never really have a problem finding a parking space. It also means that there's enough vehicle traffic in your supply to support robust ground-level retail and business activity. When you get into the green and to the yellow boxes, you have lots of supply, but you may not have the volume of traffic to support really active existing businesses or attract new businesses because of your traffic flow. And so we use this simple box when we get into our data analysis then to evaluate your overall parking system, so that we can say, well, do we have a constraint or not? We can come back to this and say yes or no, and then we can say, do we have the right type of efficiencies in our system as we sort of calibrate our system to move to that efficient supply triangle in that box? So now let's look at the performance of your system on-street. Again, we came out, and over a 10-hour period, we measured your parking supply. And this is the on-street system. So every hour on the hour, we wrote down every license plate parked on your street, on every block face within that large black boundary that you saw on the study area map of 798 stalls. The dark blue is the Thursday. It's a different 10-hour period because when we came in the summer, we wanted to go further into the evening, so we started a little later in our data collection, but we went farther into the evening so we could catch restaurant activity and other types of activity. But as you can see, the peak hour on the Thursday weekday is about 63% occupancy at 1:30 in the afternoon. That means about, I'm not very good at math, 33% of your supply is empty. But it's a large supply. We're going to narrow down on that when we get into some heat maps. But it means that overall, you're in the moderate use category for a supply of 798 parking stalls. On the Saturday, which was a beautiful day on August 5th, the peak hour on-street reached about 50%, and again, at 1:30. So again, what that suggests is that overall, in the 798 stalls of on-street parking, there's moderate use of the system. What that translates into, as you can see here, that at the peak hours, there's-- I shouldn't, we probably shouldn't have used the term stalls available, but they are available because they're publicly on-street. But on Thursdays, about 293, almost 300 stalls are empty in the on-street system. And on the weekends, about 392 stalls are empty in the on-street system. Now, we have to talk more, and we will when we get into the heat maps, as to whether they're where people want to be and what does it mean? Because again, 798 is different than coming into a smaller core area that we will look at. But also what's important to note is that the peak hours weren't changing. And as you saw between Saturday and Thursday, and as you saw, the pattern of activity after 1:30 doesn't really go up or down much. So what it says is there's a lot of opportunity to capture the evening hours even more through promotions or through events or whatever, but there's a lot of opportunity to capture more users in the on-street system. Some important numbers, when I talk to you about all of that no-limit parking out there, the question would be, how long do people really want to park in downtown McMinnville? And so what we did is we separated out those persons parking in two-hour sign stalls versus people parking in the no-limit stalls. And as you can see, the average time stay of a person in a two-hour stall on Thursday is an hour and 34 minutes. And the average time stay of a person parking in a two-hour stall on Saturday is an hour and 56 minutes, so it's still under two hours. But then in the no-limit stalls, where you have potentially people parking all day or people parking randomly from one hour to eight hours, the average time stay is really under four hours. So it means that you probably have the ability to take a look at those no-limit stalls and reduce the number of them, to send a message to a user that this is really for a visitor, not an employee. Doesn't mean we don't want employees parking on the street because, again, we have moderate occupancies. But it says, where we want visitors to park, a two- or a three-hour time stay is more than adequate. We're not going to chase someone away because they don't think they have enough time to stay downtown in McMinnville. The violation rates are important because you don't have a traditional enforcement system, like where you have not police staff but just enforcement personnel. Your violation rate is about 13%. That means of all the unique vehicles that we saw parked in two-hour stalls, about 13% of them will violate the time stay. But we found that 111 of those vehicles are people moving from stall to stall, which indicates they may be employees that are actually the ones creating the violations. But because you have a low level of enforcement, these are not adverse numbers for your violation rate. And because your occupancies are moderate, we could say that customers are not being adversely impacted because you don't have rigorous enforcement. Real quick, here's what I said. Your turnover rate, these are in all of your stalls. So this is all 798 stalls. And the industry would say that you would want an on-street stall in a robust downtown to turn over five times a day. That's a baseline in the industry. So when you go to a new business or trying to attract a retail business to your downtown to say, we have really good activity in our downtown and you need to come to downtown, you would want that turnover rate to be above five. But what's interesting, when we took the no-limit stalls out of the equation and just looked at your two-hour stalls, your turnover rate is over six, which is very good. So again, the fewer no-limit stalls, the probability of turnover going up goes up, particularly as new visitors come to downtown. Every time you turn over a stall, that's someone who's paying $20 to $45 a day to be in your downtown. So the higher the turnover, the more revenue to your ground-level retail. But at 4.68, you're kind of close to the five, but again, that high preponderance of four-hour stalls may be hurting your turnover. And long-term in your recruitment efforts, getting it above five would be ideal. Again, there's the 111. About 6% of everybody parking on-street in a two-hour stall is moving their car every two hours, and we think that a good portion of those are probably employees. So that means they're parking in a two-hour stall in front of a business, and all they're doing is moving from two-hour stall to two-hour stall. So that's something we want to work on. The off-street performance was somewhat surprising on Thursday, and this is a typical bell curve for employee parking, is where you want. You want this type of a bell curve in your off-street system, believe it or not. You want your employees off-street if you can get them off-street because the customer wants the on-street system, and the reason it's flat is because they're there all day. So as you can see, particularly on Thursday, there's not much difference between your peak hour at 10:30 a.m. or your peak hour at 4:30 p.m. The employees come in, they fill up the lots, and then they begin to leave about 4:30, and you can see this precipitous drop after 4:30. On the weekends, not surprising that you have lower occupancies because you probably have less employees downtown, but again, you don't see a lot of variation, but what you see is a lot of opportunity. This is 1,600, over 1,600 stalls that we surveyed, and on the weekends, only 30% of the supply is ever in use at the highest point. So take 70% of 1,666, and that's a lot of opportunity that could be there through a shared-use partnership. We extrapolated the empty off-street parking stalls because, again, we just took the 81% sample. So on the weekdays, there's about 650, right here, 650 empty parking stalls in the off-street system. I say empty, not available, because again, the majority of these are privately-held stalls. But if we extrapolated that to all off-street stalls, there's about 854 empty off-street parking stalls in the peak hour on the weekend, and 1,500 empty parking stalls on the weekend. On the, I'll show you a map here. I keep saying the maps are coming. They are. But what's interesting, on the weekday, of the 42 lots that we surveyed, only eight of them ever achieved an occupancy of 85% or greater, of which four of those were the public lots. So that means 34 lots are below 85%. On the weekend, only three of the 42 lots that we surveyed were constrained, and only one of those was a city lot. So again, we believe real opportunity in the off-street system. Finally, here's the map. What you can see is there's a lot of green in the map, both on-street and on the east side of downtown. We put a box, you can see the sort of a highlighted box in the middle, and I've got some data on that that I'll show you. We call that the high occupancy core, because remember when we showed you the graph that said the peak hour was only 65%? That kind of understates what a customer's perception might be because it looks like the majority of the vehicle traffic that's occurring in McMinnville is occurring in that box, which is 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, about 12 city blocks. And the occupancies go up significantly in that box. And as you can see, the number of red on-street block faces, which is block faces over 85%, and the number of red off-street facilities, 1, 2, 3, there's five of them in that box, we can say that within that high occupancy core, there is a sense of constraint, and the customer probably feels that constraint. But if we have 111 people moving and using some of those stalls within that box, that's a bad thing as well. So that's what we want to look at, but sometimes the initial data can understate areas of your downtown that do have constraint, because you can see, this is the weekday when you have a constraint in the box. But you can see, again, on the west and to the north, there's quite a bit of parking availability. If we could encourage people to walk, because the more people walk, the more shops they see. You really don't want in a downtown of your size, people doing the park in front of the business, visit one business, get back in their car and leave. You really do would rather have them park two blocks away from where they want to be and then see all the good shops on the way to their primary destination. And we can do that with maps and other things in communications. But you can see, you've got a lot of opportunity on the east end, but the high occupancy core is different. Now, this is Saturday. So again, the high occupancy core on the on-street system still stays pretty constrained. But you can see, the off-street system really begins to die off. Look at, and even Block 73, I'm going to go back, which is your garage. Block 73, you can see up there in the top north little bump out, that's your garage, and it's yellow on weekdays, which means it's 55, 60% occupied. And then on the weekend, it's green. So again, it just shows you some of the opportunities that are there. But again, this is not to detract from the fact that within your core area there, there's customers who feel that, feel that parking could be constrained. Here's just a close-up of the core, of the core of the core. This is 330 parking stalls, and you can see the, and I think it's 598 off-street stalls, so 330 on-street stalls, 598 off-street stalls. And now you can get that sense on a Thursday of how people might feel in that core. 32 of the 59 block faces in the core are over 85%. And seven of the 16 lots in the core are over 85%. So we really need to focus on the core and make sure that we're doing everything we can to get employees into the off-street facilities, even if we can get them into off-street facilities outside of the core, and make sure that we're enforcing to the level that we don't have employees using two-hour stalls in the core. And I think we could do, that would be really helpful to the user.
And Rick, back on that slide, this is limited parking, so this would be two-hour or less parking, correct?
Correct. On-street, Mayor. Yeah, off-street, the assumption is they could park as long as they wanted to. And the idea of off-street parking is we don't want to put limits on it unless it's right next to a retail facility, but the degree that we can get employees and long-term users into off-street facilities, that's really the goal. And then the on-street is the two hours where we really want that turnover to be, what it is right now at about six turns a day. So in this area, every stall gets six cars a day. Outside of this area, whatever that difference, it brings it down to 4.6 is what's slowing the rest of it down. And part of that's because those stalls are no-limit stalls. So this just summarizes, in the high occupancy node, you can see that the peak hour is actually over 85% for the combined 330 stalls, which means that core is constrained by the performance chart that we gave you. So it means if it's constrained, we need to do some changes. And then of the 508 off-street stalls, remember we had a 50% occupancy weekdays? It goes up to 80% occupancy just in the core on the same weekday. So it's near a constraint, but believe it or not, your off-street supply is right in that orange sweet spot that you want it to be in. What we want to do is get people to recognize there's off-street opportunities and push them there if we can, or with employees, maybe make them go there if we can. Weekends, we still have a lot of opportunity. Off-street, 40%, it kind of reflects what's going on for the rest of the system. And then on-street weekends, we're in the sweet spot. Believe it or not, Saturday in the core, 77% is right where you want to be. Here's the, again, we've already talked about this. This is the high occupancy node, just gives you all 10 hours. And again, it's way different than looking at that first chart I showed you, which is sometimes if you just focus only on the whole supply, you're going to understate what's really going on. And you have a robust core operating, particularly weekdays and weekends. So in short, the majority of the on-street parking still favors the employee because over 60% of your supply is actually targeted to no-limit parking. Your time stays don't indicate that you need to do that. It's very robust on weekdays in the west end of the study area in that core. The node exceeds 85%, and I'm sure that creates a sense of when people say we need to do a parking study because it's constrained downtown. Well, if you're in a specific part of the downtown, it's certainly constrained, but there's opportunities within two to three blocks of any place that you park in downtown. Average length of stay is less than three hours on-street, so we might want to think about that in terms of our mix of long-term no-limit stalls to short-term stalls on-street. And the off-street lots, of course, have a lot of availability both days. So the key strategy recommendations in the report, there's 15 recommendations. I just wanted to highlight the key ones here, and then we can go right into discussion. The near-term steps. One, I really enjoyed working with the SAC, but I think having, at least in the near-term, having a group meeting on a routine basis to go through this plan to make sure that we're implementing the measures of the plan, I think is necessary. There needs to be a continued set of eyes on moving a plan like this forward. As I said, increase the number-- As I said, increase the number of two-hour stalls and reduce the number of no-limit stalls. I think your mix is wrong. Maybe our first goal is, let's get it to 50/50. Take a look at it. Then let's get it to 40/60 the other way. But let's slowly chip away at the amount of no-limit parking we allow. Let's push it further and further out onto the edges. But as we come in, if there's a business on-street, it should have a two-hour stall in front of it. And let's take a look at that because I think financially and economically, it's going to pay off from your ability to recruit businesses into the downtown. And also, it's giving your, it sends a message to a customer, and to an employee particularly, that if it's two-hour stalls or a three-hour stall, they're really not supposed to be parking here. It, it says, "We're customer-friendly, this stall's for you." And then refine and improve your current signage system. You have a great logo, believe it or not. The logo is great. Your signage system on your public lots is great. But we were talking about with the group, expanding it to the on-street. So you've got some portal signage that directs people to your public lots. Or if you get shared-use agreements, that directs them to your shared-use lots. And that, that P, that brown, that white P against a brown background should be on everything you do. But right now, as I drove into downtown today, I didn't know these lots were available to me until I got to the lot. And I should recognize, when I come into the main portals of downtown, that, one, you have a public parking system, that's the logo, and then I follow myself. Then I see that same sign off-street, and I know that that's public parking and that's for me. And also, where you can, you should, because of the size of your downtown, and I told the SAC this, my mom always told me when she's parking, because she's 85 now, she says, "You need to give me a target." And what that is, is striping, the little T marks on the road. Big cities like Portland, they don't like it because they're just really trying to cram people on-street. But in a city like McMinnville, we're here about convenience, and we're here about simplicity. And wherever in your downtown, a commercial vehicle, a visitor doing commercial business is allowed to park, it should be striped. I looked at the, today when I came in, I was parked on a side street, and there's no striping. And it was the emptiest side street in your downtown. It also says, it gives people, if it's not striped, people don't know they can park there. So again, simple messaging, you have a really good bones here, I think we just need to expand it a little bit. At least we don't have to recreate the wheel here because, again, you have a very recognizable logo. It just needs to be put into the public right-of-way, and then we need to give some, some clues and some cues to our users that they can or can't park in certain areas. The midterm strategy, the Fifth Avenue Garage is really an opportunity, but it needs work. Lighting, entryway, exterior, signage, it doesn't have a logo on it. It needs to be improved. In the peak hour, it's sitting on, a third of its supply is empty. If that was 100 stalls and you had to build that today, that's $4 million of opportunity. That's what it would cost you to build 100 stalls. If we can capture the 100 stalls in the garage, we've just saved ourselves a significant amount of money. So I think that's a real opportunity. And then communicate, that's where we want our employees to park. I think jumping down to number three, it also offers us an opportunity with hotels and restaurants to valet into the garage with better lighting, better signage, and a, sort of a more welcoming app, entryway. I think it would be easier to sell a valet program to a hotel or a restaurant if we did that. So the Fifth Avenue Garage is really your new garage. Invest in it first before you invest in a new facility because it's empty space and it's close. Real key is to begin to identify and have conversations with the owners of private parking. Between 600 and 1,500 empty stalls in the peak hour, depending on the day. Multiply that by $40,000. So I think we want to, my mentor in parking said, "If you have empty parking, before you build parking, fill what you have." And we have an opportunity. And so we have to put those lots on the table so the private sector can take them off the table. We're not going to the private sector and saying, "You have to participate in our program." We're going to the private sector and saying, "Would you participate in our program? Could we direct employees onto your lots? Would it be financially workable for you to harbor a few employees for us?" So let's do that first. And then you have opportunities for bike parking all throughout your downtown, and you need to take advantage of that. It's flat here, and more and more cities, the logo, the picture here at the bottom is from Bend, Oregon. They just put that bike facility into their downtown. So you have a real opportunity here, particularly in the summer and the spring months. Long-term, you're going to need a policy for residential parking. It needs to be on the books. It doesn't need to be activated, but the community needs to know that if the overspill into the neighborhoods becomes problematic, that the city's ready to address it through a program that's already structured, through policy and process and procedure, that they could then petition for a. I don't think there's a huge problem there yet, but as you grow, it could become a problem. So addressing that with a policy would be good. The plan has a lot of funding options for you to explore. There's a whole section on funding opportunities to be prepared for future growth, but also to do the maintenance of your existing supply. And then to begin to strategically think about acquiring some sites throughout the downtown that could become parking in the future. But I think it's more important, not that they are going to, could become parking, but it puts the city in control of how specific sites look. And, and how you can then, and Heather's a genius at this, how you can negotiate with private developers to give you a development that you want. And in return, that could include some parking. If it doesn't include parking, the city can always put those properties back on the market. But I think it's, it's to strategically think about where future parking supply could be. And then finally, just to continue to collect data so that you can make decisions based on real facts and the performance standard as opposed to diving into something and, and doing it for all the wrong reasons. So with that, I hope that wasn't too long.
Let's open it up for questions of Rick from anyone from the council. Harry Nun, I have one, Rick. You'd mentioned a little bit of some income opportunities with the system that we have. Could you just briefly address what you might see at our Fifth Street Garage? That's the entity that's going to take a little sprucing up, it's going to take, there's going to be some expenses with that. Do you see an opportunity to do a minimal reserve parking and on a monthly basis? And is that something that we ought to look at very strategically?
Yes, a big yes to that, Mayor. And here's some reasons. One, that's where we want our employees to go. And that's where we want, and I think there's also revenue opportunities with the hotel and restaurant. But I also think it correlates, it's going to have to correlate to how strategically and quickly you can move the four-hour on-street stalls to turn, high-turnover stalls, to the two-hour stalls. Because as long as we're giving free parking on, and we can give free parking on-street, you don't have to meter your on-street system. But as long as I, as an employee, can say, "I can pay $20, $30 a month to park in the garage." Or I can go park just right on, in front of a business for all day for free. So I think, yes, the opportunity's there, but it needs to be correlated with the strategy to reduce the number of no-limit stalls on-street. Then they don't have a choice. You know, they have to look at either parking on the lot that their business provides them or that they would work with the city to park in a public facility.
Thank you. Any other questions?
Could you talk a little bit how you would structure this committee that you're talking about, the long-term committee?
Right. A good SAC usually has, I shouldn't say a good SAC, the perfect SAC is even better than good. It would have very much what this SAC has. What I really appreciated about the SAC was the participation of the mayor and councilors as well as businesses. It might be expanded to put a representative of a neighborhood on. But it really is, you know, the traditional definition of a downtown parking advisory committee are those who are affected both in terms of decision-making and on the outcome of parking. And so that is city leadership, it's businesses, it's property owners, and then affected neighborhoods. Trying to keep it 10 to 12 would be ideal. And then meeting on a routine basis. I think in a city like McMinnville, it could be every three months. But I think just coming back and picking up the plan, I think you saw on the plan we gave you, in the back of it, there's like a pull-out. It's almost a checklist. And, you know, the city, the committee could sit down and say, "Where on the checklist? What are we doing with Strategy 1? What are we doing with Strategy 2?" And be able to walk through. My fear is that oftentimes, if we don't, we, we get caught up in other things naturally and appropriately, and then we don't come back to the plan and begin to implement it.
I did greatly appreciate your timelines and what to do within the timelines. That was very interesting.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Any other questions? Alan?
Rick, I'm assuming you had input from the Downtown Association on the employees using the parking spots on, on-street. Because that seems to be a problem that can be addressed pretty simply by communication with the business owners downtown and forward on that.
Right. And Counselor, what we've done with other cities, and Gresham was a good example that started, Tigerd is now doing it, Downtown Redmond's beginning a program. I call it "customer-first," where you do go through the business association, and I call it sort of business-to-business arm-twisting, peer-to-peer arm-twisting. It's to say, we're working with the city, we have this public garage, we have a need for private-sector folks with parking to step up into the program. And in Gresham, they signed a pact. It was a non-binding pact between all members of the business community in Gresham through what was called the Gresham Downtown Development Association, GUDA. And the pact simply said, "We all agree that we will make parking a condition of employment." And that was all it really was. And it says, "We will, we will commit to each other that in our employee orientations, in our employee communications, we will tell them the rules. And that if they're not abiding by the rules, it could become a disciplinary event." But then you have to have in place, like a shared-use plan that says, "We can find you a place to park. If we have four-hour parking, go there. We don't want you doing the jump. If we have off-street parking, we need you to park there." So Counselor, you're, it is a simple fix, but it's more peer-to-peer when it's most effective.
Yeah. Just one more question, man. So it looked like a, put an estimated budget of $40,000 to upgrade the parking structure the way we think it should be. Where would that money be directed mostly?
I would start from the exterior going interior. One, cleaning up the exterior of the garage, it's kind of buried.
Power washing and...
Yeah. Yeah. And then getting your logo sign on the outside of it, that you have the McMinnville P on the outside of that garage. Then going into the front, I would really spend some time on the entry. It needs to be bright. As my mentor in parking said, it needs to look like a candle at night. It needs to light up like a candle. Then work our way into the garage. But I think lighting, paint, and exterior, in the beginning, the lighting, the paint, and the exterior presentation of the garage would be the first start. Restripe it, look at cracking and spalling in case we have water damage on the roof, that type of thing.
Yeah. The paving looks a little rough in there, too.
Particularly at the entry area.
Makes it hard to keep clean, for sure.
Right.
Thank you.
Thank you, Alan. Wendy?
I had a question about moving in the direction of having more of the parking, two-hour parking. So my understanding is that the first step would have to be addressing where, working with the businesses to address the employees that are parking there so they have a solution before we go out and start posting. Is, are there any other things that would need to happen first? Barriers to going in that direction in your experience with other communities, or is that the primary one?
I think you laid it out perfectly, Counselor. Yeah, the first thing we want to do is, before we turn the lights on, so to speak, on a system, we want to make sure we can communicate to an employee, "You can't do this because you can do this." Too many cities jump immediately into, "You can't do this, you're on your own." So I think what, is it Counselor Rudin had mentioned, the conversation with the business community that we need to work together to create a protocol for parking for our employees. We're going to begin to expand the number of two-hour stalls, and we're going to create off-street opportunity. Then we turn the system on.
Okay. Thank you.
No, thank you.
I know Murak has had an opportunity to look at this a little more than the council, but any questions from our advisory committee to Rick? Marilyn?
Something that is perception, for people that are kind of confused with this, that I'm still, I'm struggling a little with perception. I think I heard you say that somewhere around 70%, we should have maybe two stalls in a block.
Empty.
Right.
Yeah, what the industry would say, and it depends on how long your blocks are, but the industry would say the ideal situation would be that every block face would have an available stall or two. That's a standard that's, there's different ways to get to that, but you're, you're right. Yeah, that'd be the ideal. So 30% of all traffic on streets in a downtown, so 30% of all your traffic on-street is people circling the block looking for parking. So you're right, if, so if we had a parking stall available every block face, then that traffic would certainly die down. Now, how you get there in a phased approach, because we're not recommending that you go to paid parking yet because your occupancies aren't high enough. And as a result, you probably couldn't pay for the equipment necessary to begin to collect revenues. So the idea first would be more two-hour stalls, a little bit higher level of enforcement.
Well, I disagree with that. Where I look for parking spaces, I said before, I never see one block where there was parking space.
Right.
But I also agree to give it these workers along before, that if they're stopped, they're going, "Parking on that second block, the third block is very..."
Absolutely. You're right.
...whatever. So maybe not just the location, but the, the one of the, I think I wanted to, I'm going on is, we haven't talked a lot about what goes on. 8:30 at night is the last timeframe I saw here. And I would just encourage us, as we move forward, to really give a close look to what goes on at night. We have so many more people staying overnight in the downtown area. You did talk about residential permits. And I, I watched that. I came home from Portland again the other night. It's late, it's about 9:30, it's raining, it's very cold, and there's a spot right in front of my door, but I have to walk around the block. It's cold. So that, you know, maybe residential permits or something solves that. But what occurred to me as I saw all these parking spaces was that there were a lot of people staying places that really could have, have used those spaces. And the only reason I've ever been given for not having overnight parking is the street sweeper, which I have seen three times in my 20 years living in McMinnville. So I think there's maybe an opportunity to look at some additional nighttime use. I'm not saying do it because the minute I say, "Just open it up for nighttime parking," I see, start to see some downsides to it. So, but I'm saying, I think it should be in the conversation.
I don't have a great answer for the overnight parking. I've worked with cities that have transitioned from, Wenatchee, Washington does not allow overnight parking, but their evening trade has started to come up. So they're transitioning into allowing it. And so there's some steps you need to go through. The thing I was going to come back to, not related specifically to that, was what Counselor Stassen said, was in terms of what do we need to do to at least say, "We're trying to get to one or two empty stalls per block face," is the first thing we have to do is we have to do whatever we can to get employees out of the on-street system. Before you think about pricing or anything like that, it's really, we saw 111 unique license plates moving around your downtown. And it's a very small downtown. So that says to me, it's probably not a lot of visitors that are doing that, it's people coming out at 10:00, noon, and 2:00 on their breaks and moving their vehicles. If we could, but we, we could go deeper into the data and say, "How many of them are in the box?" But I know there's a percentage of them in the box. And that means, that's the first thing we need to do, is the signage, the timed phasing so when we turn the lights on, we're ready to go. But it'd be interesting if we could say, if we took 111 people out of this system and put them off-street, we might get there quicker. But then, then we come back and do the data. So your point is very well-taken, but it's really going to be those step-by-step, that's why we put it in Strategy 1, Strategy 2, Strategy 3, to help you get there. But what percentage of the 111 can we get off-street?
Mayor, I just wanted to make a couple of comments following up on, on those comments. First one was, when I was Chair of the MDA back in the mid to late 80s, we were talking about employee parking in downtown McMinnville, and we were talking about what Salem was doing, which was establishing a district where employees were fined for parking on the street. And that was... the street. And that was, that was the approach at that time, taken in Salem, as I recall. And we debated that, whether, whether that was something that McMinnville should do, and it obviously didn't happen. But we're still, we still have this critical problem of employee parking clogging up the downtown parking core area, especially in the key blocks. And, and so I think this, this concept of transitioning into a parking system that discourages that maybe less coercively, is, is a, is a good idea. The second thing I wanted to say, is that I was approached by a person I've known for 30 years, who lives on A Street, who was passing, walking around with a petition to, to come to the city council to seek essentially what amounted to restricted parking in front of their houses out in the residential fringes of the downtown. So we're talking Sixth, Seventh, Eighth, Ninth Streets. And I think that's coming to you. And so that agitation has, has begun. Thank you.
Thank you. Any last questions of Rick?
Just one, mayor.
Go ahead.
Adam?
Just to expand on Alan's question earlier, Rick, is, how do we get to that $40,000 number for the parking garage?
I think it was just an estimate. It would have to be refined. I know Heather worked on it as well. It was, is really, to be honest with you, was our initial reaction of, and I, being a former parking garage manager, to say, if someone, the way I approached it is, if someone would have come up to me and said, Rick, I need to improve this garage, we're losing business. You know, so it was more my experience of doing that. I think if you had someone come in now, and a vendor say, we need to pressure wash the exterior, we need to paint the pedestrian stairwells, we need some lighting improvements here, that number would be refined. So it was a best practices estimate, based on my own experience and then working with Heather. So it's not a perfect number by any means.
Okay, thank you.
And then Alan?
And just to follow up, councillors, MURAC worked with me on budget proposal that would be going forward for next fiscal year. We did put money into that budget to address the parking garage recommendations, so we can move forward with that, with urban renewal funds.
And then Alan. And then we'll probably need to move, because we have some other business to do before that.
Just real quick. So I didn't say the final findings, but I go back to the perception that, the word that Marilyn used is, the perception was, we're just woefully inadequate on parking spots. It looks like we have enough parking, but we're lacking in organization and directional skills.
I would agree, councillor. You have, you have the supply, we need to connect people into the supply.
Okay, thank you.
Well, before us this evening, we have a resolution, Resolution 2018, which is a resolution of the McMinnville Urban Renewal Board, accepting the 2018 City of McMinnville Downtown Strategic Parking Management Plan. And we've had an opportunity to discuss that. And so I would ask for a motion to approve Resolution 2018-2.
Second.
And a second. So it's been moved by councillor Rudin, and seconded by councillor Menke. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 And any opposed signify by saying nay. And so the resolution passes unanimously, five to five. Thank you, Rick. And again, I, your work is going to be a document that we refer to many, many, many times over the next months and the years we move towards we need to. But I think you give us a true direction of where we need to go, and you've made us much more knowledgeable, which is what we wanted in this process, too. So thank you.
Well, thank you. Again, thank you for the opportunity. We really, really appreciate it.
Great. At this point, we're going to have the annual update on the urban renewal program, and so we'll call on Heather to make a presentation to us on the district.
So mayor and councillors, I want to be really cognizant of the time. If someone can give me a heads up in 10 minutes, that'd be great. What I wanted to do is bring to you, sort of, this is your annual joint meeting with MURAC, so just talk a little bit about the projects that have been underway and completed, and talk a little bit about the projects they're discussing to do here coming up in the near term, and then looking at some recommendations for a five-year term. So I always like to start off by saying, the urban renewal is all about projects. They're authorized in the plan, they have authorized funding amounts to them, they have guestimates in terms of when they're meant to be implemented. And this is what puts together the financial feasibility analysis for the whole tax increment financing for this. Here in McMinnville, it's a little unique, because many of your projects that are in the urban renewal plan were also part of the transportation system bond, and so they have been funded through another funding source. So there's about $4 million of projects in the urban renewal plan that have been implemented through another funding source. So there's an opportunity to think about how to redistribute those dollars. The agency started off by creating development assistance programs with the facade improvement grant, then moved forward with the Alpine Avenue project, and did half of that. There's, it's identified as a $5.3 million project. Half of it has been completed at this point in time. We then started the discussion of public parking, as you just saw, and then we are about to start a discussion about the Third Street, Streetscape Project, which is identified as a $2.3 million project. To give you an update on last year, the development assistance program, we expanded it to include development loans and grants, and also design assistance. We awarded five of those, for a total of $110,000. That leveraged into $8 million worth of projects. Very unique year in terms of being able to leverage in and support a project like the Atticus Hotel. That, that is, that is, you know, for me, a twice-in-a-lifetime event. I participated in another great hotel project like this at the beginning of my career. But being able to put that type of new construction, tax improvement, and job creation on the ground in the urban renewal district this early in the urban renewal district is quite an accomplishment and great partnership with that team. And if you haven't seen it, you need to see it, because it is a legacy project for this community.
And just to remind everyone, I think, is it?
Tomorrow night.
Tomorrow at 4:30 to 7:30 is the public open house on that.
Yeah. So another legacy project will be completed here fairly shortly. It's the Alpine Avenue Street Improvement Project. We are having a ribbon cutting for that, where we're inviting people to the street. We're calling it lunch on Alpine, that's April 27th, 11 to 1:30. We'll do a ribbon cutting, and then we'll also have food, food trucks there, and just invite the community to enjoy the street, and see how it operates as a festival street moving forward. There are some next steps, though, with this project. There was, there is some return on funds for the project, so it was, it was managed very well by Mike's team. We want to look at it a little bit more closely as to how it achieves the function of a festival street, and whether or not there's any additional investments we need to make in terms of electrical and water support for those festivals, for infrastructure, and then also preparing marketing materials so people can understand how to use the street in that regard. Because the whole intent of the investment is really to create this place where people gather and creates vitality, so that we can get the frontage along the street redeveloped. As you just saw, we looked at parking. This is Oregon Land Use Law parking, to me, smush them in or go high. But anyways, this is, we looked at parking, and we are, after the utilization, utilization study, we're going to be investing in some of the management and garage improvements for next year. We also have on the docket for this year to do some district identity. So one of the projects is district identity under the Third Street, Streetscape Project. MURAC voted to allocate some funds to do a rooftop lighting program. We did it in Redmond in 2009, and it's still, this is from last year, so it's still in existence today and working very well. We'll be working with a couple of teams to put that together. Hopefully, we'll get it done this fiscal near, if not by June 30th, if not, we'll keep working on it through the summer. So that when we get into the fall and winter nights, when it gets dark earlier, we'll be able to see it. But it really starts to create an identity in the downtown area. We've also just got approval to move forward with a architecture and engineering team to start looking at Third Street, and doing a community engagement process with that, to talk about, what do we want to see in terms of improvements there? What does it mean? How do we work with the business community to make sure that it's low impact in terms of any future improvement project? So we will be moving forward and making a request for people to participate on a project advisory committee here very shortly. So the whole goal of urban renewal is redevelopment of blighted areas, and we've been, with the Alpine Avenue project, we have had some interest in some property there, primarily the two vacant lots there, Ninth Avenue and Alpine Avenue, and the old Hubert Shoe Grease Building. Working through those projects, we recognize some of the things that we still need to work on, so MURAC's been working on that as well. An example is, as we looked at many of the interest in the two vacant lots there by Ninth Avenue, there were some things that came up that were barriers for projects to move forward. One was parking. These are small lots, they're constrained lots in this area. How do we achieve the parking standards? We remove parking from Alpine, so we need to bring it in, into the district, but how do we do so? What do the improvements to Ninth Avenue look like? It's an unimproved street. How do we move forward with improvements there? Does wastewater, do we have enough capacity in our wastewater system to support the higher-density development that we're looking for in that area? There's some alleyway issues on some of these different blocks. Some alleys have been vacated, some haven't. And then also, the original intent was to underground the power lines on Alpine Avenue. We moved forward with keeping them above ground. You can't construct within a certain distance of them, though, and so that's creating some conflict with the interests of, of a zero-property line construction setback. So those are all things that we're now working through. One of the issues for parking, we have brought to the planning commission as a recommendation from MURAC, and they're going to be moving that forward in our work session here at their next meeting. So we'll be able to work through some of the kinks associated with that. And then with the Hubert redevelopment, which is under contract right now, and moving forward through its milestones of due diligence, which is good, we're also looking at parking with that particular project, because that's a zero-property line historic development on that property. What to do about Alpine Avenue, because it wasn't improved all the way to that particular block? What are the improvements to Eleventh Way, and then again wastewater capacity? So the wastewater system was designed to support the old zoning for this particular area. There's a lot of, the new vision is a lot more intensive in terms of impact, and we want to understand whether wastewater could support that. We did move forward with a study here in the last month. We got the results back, and it does show that we do have the capacity for our higher-density development, which is good for that area. MURAC's been working with a consultant to look at these local street standards. All, you have the PowerPoints in front of you, so in the interest of time, I won't go through them. But the big piece to understand for this area is, there was a commitment to maintain the ability for very large truck moving, movements on these local streets, as they turn off of Lafayette, down the local street, and onto Alpine. And that's impactful to what we can do with the build-out of the streets. So night, we talked about how Ninth Avenue's unimproved, Eleventh Way's unimproved. What do we do in terms of improving those, as we work with these development projects? Those are the only two streets that don't actually have the commitment for the trucks. So we are able to work on those street standards to figure out how to bring in more parking into the area. But those streets that do have the truck access have very, very limited opportunities in what you can do with the Streetscape, because we need to leave the access aisles wide for them. So you will see standards like this, where we will have 36 feet of street before we get to the parking sides, and then to the sidewalk. So these will actually be larger than our street standards that we have. Okay, I'm going to blow through those. And then, so in terms of next steps in the Alpine area, MURAC's been working through all those sort of barriers. One of the things I would suggest as the next step is, the two properties that are the most visible and probably accessible in terms of redevelopment have been looked at, and have been under contract, and projects are, are being penciled out for them. There's a lot of properties there that have improvements in terms of storage buildings, but they also have a lot of unimproved land. This is a great shot of how they're, you know, bordered by improvements, but they have a lot of unimproved land internal to the property. And then we have a very, very large brownfield that's developing out there as well. So those, those are properties we need to start thinking about, how do we redevelop those? And what are the tools that we need to bring to bear, so that developers can understand what redevelopment of those properties would look like, and then also visiting with the property owners to see if there's willingness to explore redevelopment of them. The Northeast Gateway District has a great action plan in it, and so we'll be working on that as we move forward. One of those actions is this industrial use transition. And so there is a recommendation in there to start thinking about repositioning those properties for interim use, so with the storage facilities as built out, to a future use of redevelopment, full redevelopment to the properties. The Northeast Gateway District Plan also talks about gateway, so designing a gateway into this Alpine Avenue area. The, the street improvement project does it, starting there at Seventh Way, but there's also opportunities out by Lafayette to look at as well. And so we might want to think about that. It also talks about a north-end catalyst project and the need for housing. That is actually one of the projects that is being penciled out right now for that area and explored. But a housing project would be a catalytic project for redevelopment there, and then the railroad trail. So these are all things we need to think about. In terms of future projects for the plan itself, we're underway with four. Four of them were taken care of by the Transportation System Bond. With a financial forecast, it looks like we can do another large bond in 2021, 2022. So how do we sort of prep towards that? Last year, we talked about the Third Street Improvement Project, is sort of prepping towards that. I wanted to introduce another discussion tonight, and actually, I'm introducing it to MURAC, too, so I apologize. But thinking through all this, and how to move things forward, and how the Northeast Gateway District is so specific in terms of midterm, near-term, midterm, and long-term actions to get to the redevelopment piece, I really think there's an opportunity to think about how to do something like that in the downtown core as well. So this is our proposed budget for next year for urban renewal. Funding the parking study recommendations, that's the management piece, as well as the garage improvements. Setting aside money for property assistance, to be able to respond to projects and fund facade improvement grants. District identity improvements, which is wayfinding as that comes forward. And then the Third Street improvements, continuing that dialogue. It still leaves a contingency of about $238,000. I think there's an opportunity to start thinking about a downtown plan, that's a little bit more specific, that will look at housing. How do we bring housing into the down, how to think about downtown beyond just Third Street, right, and going north and south, looking at office development, how to connect to City Center Park, connection to the Northeast Gateway District. By being more specific and more project-specific, we can start putting that into the urban renewal plan, and start redistributing those funds that were meant for those transportation bond projects. So. Everybody's been flashing me five minutes. I don't know if there's five minutes left, or...
Again, a really good presentation, Heather, as you always do. Questions that anyone would have on the dais or from MURAC for Heather at this time? Go ahead.
Heather, when we're looking at Third Street, I know that we've talked about this before, when we've talked about the Third Street project. When we're looking at what's on the budget, before we have a plan, how do we know that we're not going to wind up going back on some of those funds that we put into it? What's, what has been your thinking about that? I know that you talked about a couple of things that are, you're looking at budgeting for, for Third Street. How do we make sure that we know where we can put funds that won't be, when we come up with a master plan, won't be...
Deconstructed.
Deconstructed, right. That's, thank you.
Oh, yeah. So that's, that's, so I've been thinking about that.
Like wayfinding. We talked about it with wayfinding.
I know that there's been, it's been very thoughtful about the projects that were put together in the urban renewal plan. But I, I think as we continue, I think as we start talking about Third Street, and how it serves downtown, there's going to naturally be a broader discussion about downtown, in terms of a downtown, a larger downtown plan, and how does Third Street fit into all of that? Is that what you're asking? And then how do we distribute the funds in such a way that Third Street's a platform for what we want to do?
Yeah. Like, there's a lot of things that need to be, that a lot of moving parts down there. And we talked about starting to, and bring in business, and we had a wayfinding, you know, project going on. And there's all kinds of things we can do. So I'm just wondering how that will roll out with regards to, like, the longer-term strategic plan, and things we can do now.
Right. And so that's why I'm thinking, if there are funds available, maybe doing either concurrent downtown discussion, and maybe it's not a full-blown plan, but it's a discussion of a checkpoint, here's where we're at, where do we want to go, let's make sure all these pieces work together. Makes sense to me, because I've seen, some things seem to be... Makes sense to me because I've seen, some things seem to be in dialogue in isolation of other things and not leveraged as effectively as they could. The wayfinding project's a great example of that. So, you know, maybe there's that opportunity. I'm going to be honest with you, I haven't had this conversation with MIRAC, so I'm uncomfortable exploring further.
Which is why I had that question.
And really, this is an opportunity for MIRAC to get direction from you. It's the Urban Renewal Board about, are they moving forward in the right way? Are there other things they want to consider? That type of thing.
Well, just from my perspective, I just want to, I love the idea of starting to have that community dialogue because we, like we talked about, there's going to be a lot of people that have an interest in participating in that. And if we can do some things in parallel at the same time that we're sure, you know, it works, that will work, it won't be something we have to deconstruct later, then I'm open to that too. But I think that the strategy you have outlined with us already is a good one to start the dialogues now, before we have the funds, so we're ready.
And if I can add to one of these comments. I think that part of the downtown project plan is not focused on Third Street, and I agree completely with Heather on that. And the best example of that is the city has just invested a tremendous amount of money in Fifth Street in a way that enables Fifth Street access to the Granary District, which is the gateway to the Alpine District. And so, connecting Third Street to Fifth Street is a very important strategy as part of a downtown project to gain some leverage from the different projects. And so, I look forward to having those talks in MIRAC and coming back to the district with those kind of recommendations.
Yeah, definitely.
Other comments?
Hearing none, I just would like to take a moment to recognize our advisory committee. These are individuals that are very dedicated. They meet consistently, and under Walt's direction, they stay on task, and our meetings are great. But it's a committee that I've been involved with for many, many years, and I'm just amazed at the thoughtfulness, the dedication, and the vision that comes from this group. And so, individually, we'd recognize and thank each of you for your hard work. I mean, we're right in the middle of stuff, you guys. It's not going to end, but at the pace it's been going, it is, it's amazing, and it's one of our success stories. And it comes from your dedication. And even more than that, for many of you, it's years and years and years of knowing what's been going on and sticking to the, sticking to the plan and not allowing us to go sideways. And I'd even take an opportunity to thank Heather for her experience and her ability to keep us going in that straight path too. So, exciting times. We'd love to have you come and have these joint meetings and just look at your successes, but at the same time, be looking at what's coming in the future because that's what we were talking about with parking and some of the other things coming with your proposed budget tonight. So, any closing words?
Mary, if I might just respond a little bit. Your kind words are very much appreciated by MIRAC. I would say that Heather's presence has given attraction to this, to this group that it did not have before she was here. I would also say that the presence at MIRAC meetings of Water Link, staff, City Council, I can think of three members of the City Council were just about at every MIRAC meeting. And the staff at Alpine Department without that MIRAC did not do much traction, and that commitment for that, we thank you.
Well, we're all in it, up to as far as we will allow ourselves, but we love the work, so thank you. Well, with that being said, I'll go ahead and adjourn our joint meeting for this evening. And thank you. And we'll take about five minutes just to kind of, if we need to do any rearranging or preparing for our City Council tonight.
Oh, yes, sir. I want to give that one up, that's a special one. To me, I brought it from Texas. Thank you.
See you later.
See you later.
Thank you.
Welcome to her, I guess.
Okay, so we have, we're all square away on the dais.
We all square away?
Okay. I would like to welcome everyone to the 1/27/2018, please, council leaders, and I will call visiting orders. I need to have a question.
I 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 have a question.
This evening, we're going to start with a couple of presentations, and our first presentation is going to be on abandoned vehicles and RV parking, and we'll call on Police Captain Tim Simons to come up and make a presentation to the council. Captain?
Everybody hear me okay? I don't have a PowerPoint on this. Basically, I'm going to go over the staff report that Chief Scales prepared in reference to the city ordinance request that we had come before you on February 21st of this year. This is a report to brief basic information with regards to this, as was outlined in that report. The police department has seen an increase with regards to vehicular camping and RV-related parking issues in abandoned vehicles. The current abandoned vehicle code is extremely time, labor-intensive, where it takes an extended period of time to be able to address abandoned vehicles, and we don't have anything with regards to recreational vehicles currently on the books that's enforceable. Chief Scales and I did some checking into various codes throughout the, throughout the state and presented those to you at that time. And since then, we've provided information to the city attorney's office with regards to language that we would like to see incorporated into the city code with regards to both abandoned vehicles and recreational vehicles.
There is a, a part of our materials tonight is, as the captains indicated, a, we've received quite a bit of information. I feel there's been a really, really good job of listening to the council and coming back with the possibility of an ordinance tonight. So, at this point, what I'd like to do is just turn it open, open it up to the council for questions, clarifications. The intent tonight is to have a first reading and discussion. We have a number of public comments that looks like they want to address that this evening, and in our public comment section, we're not going to be able to do that, given the fact that it is on the agenda, but I would submit to us that we may want to take a look at having a public comment at our next meeting prior to the second reading. Not many have had an opportunity to look at this ordinance unless they've gone in. I know I had an opportunity over the weekend to pick it up and have really gone through it very carefully, but I leave that up to you as a council, how you want to address this. We've had general comments about RV parking, but we've not had the ordinance, and we haven't taken any comment on that. So, however we'd like to do that tonight is up to you, and I'll listen, and we'll move forward with that. But at this point, let's open it up to questions of our police department from any member of the council. Any comments? Okay, Wendy?
Thank you for doing this. I like how clear it is. I was wondering, we had, there had been some discussion around permits for, in some of the communities, they did that for, in front of your own residence for a certain number per year, and I might have missed it, but I didn't see that in there. Was that something that, that, there was discussion around when you were reworking the ordinances for residents?
There was, there was discussion involved with regards to permits, but it didn't make it into the, to this current version of it.
Okay, great. Okay.
I would also say, if that's as a part of this discussion, a direction that the council wants us to look at going, we can, as staff, take that back. It wasn't clear from prior discussions that that was something that the council wanted us to take a closer look at.
Clear direction on that.
Correct.
Okay. Got it. Okay, thanks.
Adam?
We had talked briefly about fines and things like that. Is there, from what I can tell in this ordinance, that looks like that's been removed? Is there, is there any...
Currently, the fines for abandoned vehicles is $45, and the thought was to continue on with the $45, unless there's a different direction from the council.
Okay.
Yeah, I have a few questions.
Okay.
Captain Simons. In terms of the changes to the ordinance, in addition to the impacts on overnight camping, what are the other impacts going to be?
As far as other vehicles?
Impacts on RV camping, impacts on, on, say, long haul truckers, that type of thing.
As far as the long haul trucker aspect is concerned, there currently is a permitting aspect of it within the, within the code. That had been really restrictive with regards to, it had to be in front of either a hotel or somewhere where someone was sleeping between the hours of 9:00 PM and 7:00 AM. We had, we had struck the language as far as the location, continuing on with the same timeframe with regards to having to get a permit to park a, either a semi truck, the cab itself, or and/or a trailer apparatus on a city street. As far as the overnight camping aspect is concerned, it was more along the lines of just directing, or being directed at RVs being on the street themselves.
Just in general.
Right.
Okay. Do we have a sense of how many, aside from the overnight campers specifically, how many RVs do we have camped on city streets? Do you have any sense of that?
Are you asking about the ones that were not called to, that were not called to every I have no clue on that.
The reason I'm asking is that it's a...
Because it's, it's all, it's all call-driven. We aren't out there actively looking for them. It's all, it's all based on calls that we receive to the police department.
Okay. I may have other questions for you later. Thank you.
Thank you, Sal. Other questions?
Other questions?
Um, yeah. There's gonna be some.
Just as far as discussion, from my standpoint, um, I would like to see a permit thing put in there, and I believe it was, like, Gresham that had the permit. There's a few permits per year for, like, an eight-day window or something like that. Um, is Gresham or Oregon City? I don't remember exactly.
It was in Oregon City. Uh, they, they have a no-tolerance policy.
Okay.
I think it was Gresham that did have, at least, Gresham was one of the ones that I pulled, and I actually pulled their, their permitting, um, form that they have that's submitted through the city.
And then, as far as the fee structure, um, I think minimum of $100, but after sitting through the, a couple of different things we've done, and it's specifically the Eugene thing we did, uh, Monday, and when they talked about Eugene has a $200 fine, and that, that keeps people moving and, and motivates them to, to not sit in one spot continuously. Um, I, I just don't feel that $45 is really gonna be, be a motivating factor. So I would like to see that, that fee increased. And when you guys presented last time, I believe the, the fines varied anywhere from a hundred to, like, a thousand or something.
Couple thousand.
So, I don't know. I, I'm not looking-
Actually started at $15 and went to, I believe it was, uh, $2,500.
Yeah, and I'm, I don't think we should be anywhere near that, but I do think it should be in line with, you know, other, other fines we have out there.
And, and just piggybacking on Adam's, um, question, I, I couldn't find it in, in the resolution, but was there any mention made that the fines would be, um, uh, we'd need to look at the current fine, uh, schedule instead of embedding it in the ordinance, where we could put it in a, a, a fine section that we wouldn't have to amend the ordinance? That, I, I thought I read that, but I may, I may have, I've been looking a lot of stuff recently.
That was a topic of discussion, um, when we were going over what the fine structure should be, and if, the discussion basically was that if, if it was put into the, to the actual code, that you would probably have to go in and change it any time that you wanted to adjust it, either up or down.
Right.
Versus if it was just addressed in some sort of a fine code, you could reference back to that and say that it would be a A violation, whatever that was designated at, or a B.
And, and that would be my preference, is to, to make mention of the types of fines we have there, but for the current fine, to go to a, a, a fee schedule that could be updated without having to go in and amend the ordinance itself.
Yeah, and I would be in agreement with that.
Okay. Kelly?
So, I have a question. I, I agree with the additional fine. I think it should be raised to around 200 at least. I guess I'm a little puzzled on the abandoned vehicle. They've got 24 hours to get it moved. On the RVs, is it just a no-tolerance? They will be automatically fined, or?
Yes.
Okay. All right, that, that explains that.
With the one exception, if you're actively loading or unloading.
Correct.
Right. So when you're talking about the exception, and you've, are you talking about several days to have that time period? Is that what we're talking about? When you're loading and unloading your own RV, is that what you're alluding to?
The permit?
Yeah, the permit.
Yeah.
Okay. So...
The language for the permit can be structured in any way that the council would like to have it structured, but basically, Gresham was, in a nutshell, was something along the lines of you could ask for a permit, uh, I believe it was up to four or six times a year, and it was for a duration of eight, eight consecutive days during that timeframe.
Seems like a lot, but I guess.
That permit was also for contractors, if they had, like, a dump trailer, uh, enclosed trailer with tools in it or something like that, correct?
I believe so, yes.
Yeah.
I'd probably want to, if you're on the side of maybe more four times a year max, and maybe eight days seems kinda high to me, unless you're, if it, or, does this include, like, doing, uh, like, work on a house or something where you'd have something like that?
It could, we could have it include whatever the council would like to have it include with regards to-
Because I would not normally think of that as being something that would be included.
Yeah, as, as I read it, Kelly, I thought of a few things where you might have, um, a construction company doing a roof.
Right. That's exactly what I was thinking.
And they bring things and kinda stay there through that duration. I, I, uh, the thing that came to my mind is those that are doing landscaping, and if they're a smaller, if it's a smaller landscaping company, they may not have, per se, off-street parking. Those are the things that came to my mind when I was looking at that, and I don't know if I have the answer, the understanding of that, but I can see... So maybe some clarification.
I guess I have to ask, I, it's, at least in my mind, it wasn't even kind of contemplated in the, the premise of what we were discussing, which is really more like vehicular camping type of situation. So I, would that be in a separate area, that we could deal with it separately?
Well, I'm, I, as I'm envisioning a, a tow trailer or a, or a work trailer, um, a tool trailer, would not appear to meet the definition of a recreational vehicle-
Right.
-in the ordinance. I'm not sure that it would meet the definition of a motor truck. Is there, is-
No, it, it wouldn't, uh, and-
So I'm not sure that it would fall within any of the restrictions that are listed here in the ordinance.
So that's not something we really actually need to re, address tonight.
Correct. The, the, the ordinance as written today, or as proposed to be amended here, doesn't, there aren't restrictions on the parking of those work trailers?
Correct.
Correct.
That would also include, like, boats.
Yeah.
Those, those types, those types of trailers as well.
Jeff?
Uh, Mayor, uh, Captain Simons, is the, I, I'm wondering, is the, the permit standard that Gresham and maybe he, other cities have, are those, are those designed to accommodate intermittent visitors? I remember when my father-in-law would RV, he would come to Oregon and he would park in front of our house for a four-day weekend. That, are, are those the kind of permits that would be, that would be granted? Uh, is that?
I believe that, that Gresham's was, was pretty restrictive in that, uh, if it was applied for, it had to be for the person who lived at the residence. Uh, it wasn't a family member. I, I don't recall it going into family members or, uh, friends of, of it, that, but that it had to be for the person that lived there to park adjacent to their, their residence on the road.
But if the owner had a visitor and an RV, they could put their visitor in the RV, is that the sort of use of, that they would have for the permit?
Correct.
Okay. That makes sense.
Alan?
Uh, is this, uh, I, I've been gone for a week, so I apologize. I haven't been able to study this document that we received.
So, so you ha, you have in front of you, in the packet, there was the ordinance, um, along with Exhibit 1, that had the, uh, the proposed language for the code. What you have in front of you with the dais has a, a different definition for the term recreational vehicle that pulls from both the ORS 446.003 definition, as well as the OAR, um, definition, to provide some better terms there, but that's just being presented tonight for consideration as an alternative. There, there's at least a, a typo in what was presented in the packet, since it was taken directly from the statute that refers to, uh, rules promulgated by the director, and that's the Director of the Department of Consumer and Business Services, uh, which was not intended to, to be in, in our city code language. That's correct. Thank you.
Oh, I see what you're saying.
I'm, I'm, I'm Sal for-
It is different. Different.
For reading that for us.
I'm assuming that, uh, that PD and the city attorney's office worked in conjunction with, with all this, and-
That, that's correct.
Those guys are in harmony with that. Okay.
Okay.
Okay. I got it.
Captain, uh, could you talk to us a little bit of, from a police department perspective, what implementation looks like of this program? What would you suggest for us? The timeframe, because I don't think that was, uh, that was not addressed. The way I looked at it is, we pass this ordinance, it, it's, uh, enforceable from that point going forward, and so just some insights into that.
Yeah, in, in the proposed ordinance, we'd actually built in a seven-day, roughly a seven-day, um, period prior to it becoming effective. That would have allowed opportunity for the police department to go out and begin making notifications and giving notice to folks that they're going to need to make other arrangements, uh, to move their recreational vehicles, uh, off the street, wherever they might be. Um, and, uh, we would propose that going forward, that it not be a full 30-day, um, wait period, because there does appear to be an emergency condition that the council could find. But rather than it going into effect immediately upon adoption, that there be some, some notice period. And, Captain Simons, if you wanna talk about what your, your plans were for that period?
Well, it would be, uh, for that seven-day period, uh, it would be to provide as much information as we possibly could to as many sources as possible with regards to the changes of the language with regards to the city code and how it would be enforced. Uh, that would be putting information out on our, our Facebook page, uh, going and making personal contact with folks as much as possible, uh, providing information to the news register to, uh, to try and, and reach as many people as possible.
Okay.
And-
Adam?
Respect to, um, the parking for sale, repair, or storage of prohibited, um, basically that just cleans up the streets of people that have been curbing cars, uh, for example, on Baker across from Wells Fargo?
Correct.
Okay.
Further questions of the captain? Because we will have a discussion among ourselves after that, but any further questions of Tim?
Yeah, I just have one more.
Okay, Wendy?
Um, with regards to loading and unloadings, is there a timeframe around that, or is, as long as there have, they have, um, the activity of getting all of the things out of the vehicle?
It's a reasonable amount of time. There's, there's no specific time limit.
So they can't say, I'm loading for a week?
But you can't, you can't say, well, I'm gonna take one thing in one day, and then the next day I'll take something else in, and then three days later I'll take something else in. It's, it's, you're actively loading or unloading your RV.
Okay. Okay. And, and, um, as a police department, you feel comfortable with that, not having a specific, that you can enforce that, because judgment of the, the police department with regards to whether it's reasonable or not?
Yes, I thi, I think that we can be reasonable.
Okay.
You feel that's a clear enough definition?
Yeah, that's, that was my question, to give you guys the teeth to be able to say, no.
The ability to enforce the code.
I, I believe so, yes.
Could I ask a question about I, then? And I, I'm not sure if I should be asking you or, or David, but, uh, I really like this definition of recreational vehicle that ties right in with the tax code. So, it, it kinda bothered me before. I guess my only comment here would be, in most of these RVs, theoretically, they should have a kitchen or a place to eat and have sleeping facilities. What if, for some reason, they don't have a place to eat in there?
Yeah, and, and this is, the, the definition that you've got here, um, was borrowed from the definition that's, that was promulgated for recreational vehicle by the Department of, um, Business and Consumer Services, the Building Codes Division, and it's for the purpose of regulating the construction of these types of, of vehicles. Uh, and so, i- as a result of that, they make reference to electrical facilities, eating facilities, uh, sleeping facilities in those, um, in terms of defining what, what they regulate from a construction standpoint. Those particular elements of the definition don't necessarily, aren't necessarily instructive to us, um, but there does need to be some way of distinguishing one type of vehicle from another. Um, and, and so, you know, from a policy standpoint, that's just, it, it's put in, uh, forward there for your consideration. If cooking facilities or eating facilities is not an essential element of it, but if it's just, you know, the sleeping facilities in a vehicle, um, that, that you wanna focus on, we can certainly, when we take this back to continue working on it, we can, we can make those revisions.
Yeah, you might wanna make that an "or" instead of an "and."
Which one?
Under I, 1, where, where the point that you were just talking about, contains eating and sleeping facilities, you may just wanna make that an "or."
Well, that or just, if, if eating is the concern, I would, I would suggest just deleting it altogether.
Strike it. Yeah. That's fine.
Including the sleeping?
Yeah, contains sleeping facilities as designed or used for human occupancy or as temporary living quarters, and has its own mode of power, or is mounted on or towed by another vehicle.
Okay. Okay, any other comments or, uh, questions for Captain Simmons? Alan, any, any further? Win, okay, Wendy? Adam?
Um, I would just ask if there's anything that's not on here that you were on the fence about, including, or if everything in here is what you believe the PD needs as far as the tool in its toolbox moving forward. It's, the documents, hasn't been a long, long time coming, but it's definitely taken some time, and so I'd like to, to do it once and not revisit it in six months to sharpen it some more.
Well, I think that the, the cleaning up of the language as far as the, the abandoned vehicle code is, is far overdue, and it will help in, uh, expediting any issues that, that we currently are presented with, um, to be able to not spend as much time and labor with regards to tracking vehicles. The RVs, I think, is, is, is kind of a work in progress. We're trying to, obviously, make sure that we're doing what's, what is the right thing for everyone involved. And, uh, trying to craft that in a way that is usable and workable as, as much as possible.
Okay. Thank you.
So, am I correct in assuming this is a no-tolerance policy?
As far as-
For the recreational vehicles and vehicular camping?
It, it, I would say that it doesn't get all the elements of vehicular camping, um, but it, it's zero tolerance with respect to a particular type of vehicle being parked on the public right-of-way.
Okay, and if, uh, after the seven-day notification period and such, what happens if they're inappropriately parked? If you're in an RV?
Specific to RVs?
Yeah. Specific to RVs or specific to people camping in cars?
Uh, if you're, if you just have an RV and it does not meet the classification of an abandoned vehicle, so it has a current license and insurance and tags and everything-
Right.
-then it would be a ticket.
Which would have a fine?
Which would have a fine.
What if they continued not to move?
Then they would continue to get tickets.
Okay.
So as a, and this, this goes a little bit beyond the scope of what, um, we were presented with. The, the city of Big Menville currently does not have a policy that allows for the booting or the towing of vehicles that have accumulated a certain number of parking tickets. So, um, for example, somebody parking in the downtown core continually violating the two-hour parking restriction would continue to accumulate parking tickets, um, choosing to pay them off or not, uh, but they would not, at any point in time, find their vehicle to be booted or towed. We're not proposing any special treatment of recreational vehicles here, um, and it would suggest that if we were looking at, um, a policy of, um, taking a sterner action against vehicles that have accumulated multiple citations and violation of the parking code, that it'd apply to all vehicles and not just a particular class of vehicles.
I would tend to agree with that.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So, so that, that is something that, that if you wanted us to look at, we could look at what other, we, we did not explore that particular issue, because it was larger than just this particular, uh, type of vehicle. It, it dealt with all vehicles.
From my point of view, I'd like you to explore it.
Okay.
And I would have a question for the captain. As you have talked to other municipalities that don't boot or tow and just assess fines, is that a deterrent, or is it just fines are, are accumulated and it doesn't change behavior? I, I don't know if you'd ask that question.
I did ask that of, of a few, and, and the information that was provided was that they can just continue to, to add tickets to the, the offending vehicle. Um, and they, they kinda weigh the, uh, the option of continuing to do that based on whether or not they're going to either gain vol, voluntary compliance by moving or not parking in an area where they're not prohibited to, or if they're going to continue to, to park there, if they're going to pay the fines. And, uh, to that point, they had not made any decision, that municipality had not made any decision as far as they were going to take the next step of, if you violated it X amount of times, they were gonna be towing your vehicle. They, it just was something that they had not, uh, approached yet.
But there were a number of, there were several other cities that actually had gone the additional step of booting or towing, and-
Yes.
-they felt it was effective, even though had, they didn't have to do it very often.
Correct. And Oregon City was one of those cities that, that does currently boot. If, uh, rather than chasing a vehicle around town, they will boot, they will boot the vehicle and then they will tow it if, if the fines are not paid.
I have a couple of comments. Um, I'm really not comfortable talking about, um, the towing and booting of these- I'm really not comfortable talking about the towing and booting of these vehicles solely in the context of this ordinance. I think it's important that that be part of a broader conversation about ticketing in general in the city, and that maybe it's not fully appropriate for this particular forum. The second comment I would make is that I do think that cleaning up this ordinance, strengthening the ordinance, and giving the police tools to enforce health and safety regulations on the street is overdue. I have concerns about the potential for growing the car camping population in the city as we approach the summer, so I think we do need to take timely action as a council. I'm very uncomfortable about doing that without providing people who are car camping in the city a legal place to go. I realize that we have plans to move, we have a lot of plans to do things to make availability for camping, but they're very nascent, they're very much at the beginning of the process. So I was one of, perhaps the only voice, but I think there might be one other voice on the council that would like to see some type of limited permitted camping related to hardship in very narrow areas of town. I mean, not on Door and Drive, not necessarily in places where it impacts people, but I think that until we're able to provide more facilities or more services than we currently are, that that is something that I would like to see. Might not be possible on the time scale that we have. So at a minimum, I'd like to see this as, if we do take this action, whether it's tonight or next week, that it only be a first step, and that we move expeditiously to implement some of the recommendations of the task force.
Thank you, Sal. Any other questions of Tim? Again, I think we need to have this discussion among ourselves.
Yeah. No, it's a good subject, and I'm in full favor of booting and towing. I think it's, there's no deterrent whatsoever for people who don't care about tickets and will continue to use the system to park at their needs, and without any kind of backup or strength in it, I don't think it's worth much. There will be some that will be affected by multiple tickets, and they might feel like they might want to pay them, but for the most part, they're not. But there is works in progress for creating certain designated areas for vehicular camping. I think that's going to happen in the future, and that's working in a positive way right now. But I'm all for the booting and towing.
I just wanted to make one additional comment, is something that David had said in a previous meeting, is there are places to go to put a vehicle that it's legal that is for pay, right? Currently in the city, that's why you said it was, so it's not like there is not a place for vehicular, for RVs to go?
I think actually that's not, that's not true. For vehicles that are older than 10 years, there's no availability currently in the city. There are two places that allow it, but the waitlist is so long that there's effectively no, there is no space for recreational vehicle camping that are over 10 years old, or just parking a recreational vehicle over 10 years old. So I think in addition to addressing the camping ordinance, we might also be creating issues for people who are just residents, who aren't camping in their recreational vehicle, who have an older RV. And so.
Okay.
But again, I want to make it clear, I think we need to take action here on a very fairly narrow time scale. I mean, we need to move on this. I think it's maybe taking longer even than it should despite the captain and the attorney's best efforts.
Okay. Well, any more questions for Tim with his presentation? Because the ordinance is not before us at this point, and we will have an opportunity later this evening when we go over ordinances to have the discussion. But I want to make sure that your questions are answered and you have a full understanding of what the police department and the city attorney have put before us this evening.
Thank you.
I just want to say thanks for your time and your department's time and working with David on putting this all together.
You're welcome.
Credit to Natalie on this one. I just had the assist.
Well, it's a team effort. Okay, thank you, Captain, we appreciate it.
Thank you.
Our second presentation this evening is going to be a presentation on our vision, mission, values, and strategic priorities, and I will call on our city manager Jeff Towery and Brian Scott of BDS to come before us tonight and update us on that strategic plan process. Jeff?
Thank you, Mayor, members of the city council. You've met Brian on a number of occasions before. I'll just sort of vamp for a couple of minutes while he's getting his technology hooked up. Brian traveled down from Seattle today, and he's with you tonight for about the next 45 minutes or so to talk through this next stage in the process. Brian?
Thank you, Mayor and Jeff. Brian Scott with BDS Planning, facilitating the city's strategic planning process. Thank you for sharing part of this meeting with me. Purpose tonight is to give a quick review of the process to date, affirm the strategic priorities that we discussed in a workshop a couple of weeks ago, and then we want to introduce and consider vision, mission, and value statements for the city. We're not going to try and make a decision tonight, but want to kind of socialize some ideas that have emerged from the process and get your thoughts on those and give you a chance to start thinking about those. So the process, we've talked about this before, it's got three phases. Assessment phase on who we are, and then a strategic planning phase on where we want to go, and then a how phase and implementation strategies. We are approaching the end of the first phase of the process. We finished the values survey, a series of values workshops and focus groups, lot of robust discussion about that. Completed five focus groups, a city council, a work session, a community survey, and a situation assessment. Tonight, we're here to talk about vision, mission, and values. The next step is next week, a strategic planning workshop with the council, senior staff, and community stakeholders to start work on the strategic priorities. So that's where we are in the process, and then once we've determined the strategic priorities, individual work groups will go to work on each of those. So the strategic priorities, you have had a memo outlining where those came from, and we had a robust discussion of those a few weeks ago, and I just wanted to give you a chance to affirm those. We'll be organizing the discussions at the charrette next week on growth and development character, housing opportunities across the income spectrum, economic prosperity, city government capacity, community safety, engagement and inclusion, and civic leadership. Good discussion about that recently, but that still all sound all right to everybody after you've had a couple of weeks to think about it. A lot of nodding heads, I'm going to take that as a robust. Feel free to say hallelujah.
Yeah, and hallelujah too.
So moving into mission, vision, and values, these words are used often in various places and in different ways. I'd like to provide a context that might be useful for discussing each of these in the context of municipal strategic planning for McMinnville. I'm going to give you a little sort of primer on each one and then show you a proposed statement that we have prepared as a fallout of all of that discussion over the last couple of months involving more than 1,000 members of the community through various ways, and give you a chance to comment if you feel like it now. We're not going to act tonight, but just kind of a chance to think about it and give feedback. First of all, a vision. What is a vision statement? It's an overarching statement that describes where you want to be, where you want the organization to be in the future. So it's describing a future, a future state. It defines an optimal desired future state, helps you answer the question, where do we want to go? What do we want to be? It's a good place for lofty and aspirational, but it can also be practical and quantitative, that's kind of a decision. You're trying to describe the place you're trying to get to. So some examples of municipal vision statements that you can admire or disrespect as you choose. Tacoma, Washington has a vision that says the city of Tacoma is recognized as a livable and progressive international city regarded for the richness of its multicultural population and its natural setting. So it's a very important piece of the Tacoma strategic plan they did a few years ago. Tacoma is the most diverse big city in the Pacific Northwest, and part of that was them sort of embracing that as part of who they are and as an asset. Portland, shaped by the Willamette and Columbia rivers, Portland connects people and nature to create an international model of equity and sustainability. You know Portland, they're always like that. King County in Washington has done some really good work on this stuff. A diverse and dynamic community with a healthy economy and environment where all people, businesses, and organizations have the opportunity to thrive. I think that's a well-written one. So based on the process that we've been doing so far in McMinnville, we thought a vision statement for McMinnville in 2032 might be, with a legacy of strong civic leadership, McMinnville is a diverse and thriving city, growing with intention to preserve our small-town feel while expanding opportunities for all.
I think it hits us the nail on the head, really. It talks about our legacy, and it talks about where we're going. But we want that small-town feel, and we relate that as livability, but it is that small-town feel that we are always looking at expanding and growing and, but being in charge of somewhat our destiny.
I like livability too. Livability says so much that I wish we had that in there somewhere.
Okay.
Mayor, Brian, could you talk a little bit about the key themes that emerged from the stakeholder and the survey group? And so which, you know, where did these, some of these concepts resonate, and what was the origin, and sort of how much cross-pollination did you get across the different efforts for different components of this work?
Okay, great, great point. So through the first phase of this process, we did an online community survey, got more than 1,000 responses, which were reflective of the community of McMinnville in terms of who responded. We did a series of focus groups with city staff, with some longstanding, the leadership council, longstanding leaders, a group of younger folks who the main organizing principle is they weren't those older folks, they were younger than those folks. We did two groups with Latino members of the community, and so we had robust discussions there. We also had conversations with senior staff, and then with a frontline staff working group, and then two or three discussions of our leadership team for this process, which is the department heads plus three or four community members. Through all of those processes, the things that you see here came strongly out of that. One big theme that really captured it for me, and I've had, as you all know, the great opportunity to work in McMinnville off and on for 30-some years, a characteristic of McMinnville has been the really inspired civic leadership here and the volunteer leadership in the community. And I got a great sense through this process and from the surveys that people are very proud of that, and a little, and even the people that are right in the middle of it are a little, it scares them a little bit. The older folks are caring very much about this place they've been working on so hard for so many years. The younger folks are, want to live up to that legacy of civic leadership. So really recognizing that seemed to be an important piece of that. Another characteristic that came out of this is McMinnville is changing in terms of the demographics of its community. It is much more ethnically diverse than it was 10 years, 20 years, 30 years ago. Nearly a quarter of the population is Latino, and recognizing that, embracing that, and recognizing that's an important, seemed to be an important piece of this. Growing is a big feature that people have great response in this thing. People are, McMinnville is very conscious of the fact that it has grown a lot in the last 20 years, that affordability is a challenge, but everybody wants it to thrive. I didn't hear anybody saying lock the doors, hold it, nobody said stop growth, but we wanted to be intentional about it and try and make sure we preserve those characteristics of this community that you could afford to live here. It was a great place to raise your kids, and, but also make sure we were finding opportunities for all so people had incomes that could keep up with the price of living here. Does that address your question, Jeff? Any other comments on that?
Any other comments as it relates to the vision?
I guess I'd like to think about it a while.
Sure, of course. That's why we didn't want to make a decision, give you some time to chew on it. All right?
Okay.
So moving on to a mission statement. What is a mission statement? It's a statement of organizational purpose, defines who you are, your products, services, customers, and overall strengths. Basically, what you are as a corporation, municipal corporation. It's a basis for decision-making within the organization. Everybody should understand it, it should be simple, easy to understand, people should know what we're about. Good mission statements describe what you do and why your organization exists, they're straightforward, and are intended to be enduring. I've known a number of organizations that have had the same mission statement or are very similar for many decades. At the same time, their vision had changed over the years depending on the circumstances. Been doing a strategic plan for an organization called The Mountaineers that's located in Washington, and they've been around for 110 years, and if you look at the mission statement they adopted 100 years ago and the one they have today, they're not that different. There's a few words have changed, but they've kind of, what they're about hasn't changed, although their vision has gotten much broader in their reach. So a good vision statement should, or a good mission statement should contain two elements. The business, what is, what the organization does, and the purpose, the ultimate result the organization is trying to achieve. So some examples from the Pacific Northwest. In Tacoma, we provide high-quality, innovative, and cost-effective municipal services that enhance the lives of our citizens and the vitality of our neighborhoods and business districts through teamwork, integrity, and continuous improvement. It does all those things we say, it's kind of a mouthful. Portland, promote a culture of civic engagement by connecting and supporting all Portlanders working together and with the government to build inclusive, safe, and livable neighborhoods and communities. And King County, King County government provides fiscally responsible, quality-driven, local and regional services for healthy, safe, and vibrant communities. So there's some examples. McMinnville has had a mission statement. The existing statement is, the city of McMinnville is primarily responsible for maintaining a safe and livable environment within the community. This is achieved by providing open governance and efficient delivery of public services. Through some of the process, we suggest maybe there'd be a modified statement, a little shorter. Might be, the city of McMinnville delivers high-quality and equitably accessed services in collaboration with partners for a healthy, safe, and prosperous community. Again, this is pulling from the process that we've been hearing about. People are proud of the high-quality services of the city government, but we've heard from the city government itself that some of those are fragile as we work to think about future budgets and keeping up with need for infrastructure improvements and things. This is a town where collaboration with partners is kind of what makes the whole place tick, so that's a major piece there. And then a healthy community, a safe community, and a prosperous community seem to be some of those core things that come up in every single conversation that we talk about. of those core things that come up in every single conversation that we talk about. Any thoughts on that?
The Portland mission statement, which used the word promote, I kind of preferred that to delivers, simply because delivers seems a little more self-serving.
I love the collaboration with partners because that, I feel that deeply, and you articulated that very well, Brian. I wonder if there's a different word than healthy. I don't know what, you know, what that really means, you know. I mean, there's...
Be vibrant?
Maybe.
I don't know what equitably accessed means, so there might be other people that don't know what that means.
Okay.
I can take a guess at it, but...
And in reality, every citizen should be able to look at it and understand specifically what we mean, and that's the same thing that hit me, Alan, initially. I had to stop and think, and then it's my perception of what it is, which is different than yours and different than Wendy's and each of us. And the same thing hits me with healthy. When I think of healthy, there's, you know, there's all kinds of aspects of health.
Okay.
And it doesn't pinpoint me maybe as specific as to what we are trying to communicate.
Well, it looks like, I think back to Alan's point about livable, I wonder if we had, instead of healthy, we brought the livable back into the statement? Because that, livability is big for us.
It is.
I mean, I think that's kind of...
We use that in every other word, don't we?
Yeah, I think so.
So, everyone has a somewhat of an idea, maybe, about...
So, maybe if there's a way to have that present in there.
But I don't know if that's the intent of what all these people have shared with you.
You know, one other thing on the, since we're attacking this severely right now.
You were so nice about the vision.
On a mission statement, it's things to come. So, "City of McMinnville delivers," that means we've already done this. So, I'd rather get away from delivers...
I like promotes.
...which means we're there already. To a mission statement says that this is what we're striving to do, and we're going about it this way to accomplish the purpose.
Delivers also strikes me as like the separation between us and who we're delivering to. It's really more of a collaboration.
Doing it together.
You have collaboration in there, but I think the delivers kind of works against that feeling. It's really, we're not delivering it to people, we're working on helping that to happen here.
Okay.
So, I think that word, that's a good idea, promotes, fosters, encourages.
The only, the only thing I want to say, and I don't want to defend the wording that here, but the only thing I wanted to sort of expand on, the equitably accessed, I completely acknowledge there's a lot of syllables in that, so it's a little bit chewy. But I think there was a pretty strong value that came out of this first part of the process is that your services need to be available to everybody that's in the community, even those that aren't the traditional folks that you see at City Hall all the time, and we were trying to make that point, so we're trying to figure a better way to make it, but...
If there's a better way to word it, it just is a lot.
Yeah, I'm completely acknowledged.
But I agree with what you're saying.
Yeah, the idea of it, I think the, is good. It's just a mouthful, and maybe there's a different way, like services for all.
Or inclusive.
All-inclusive services or services for all citizens.
That means something different. This means everybody gets an equal shot at the services.
Yeah, exactly, exactly. Just a more fluid way of saying it and less kind of, that's a very logical, like, technical feeling statement that maybe isn't as accessible to everybody.
Right, right, right. I acknowledge that.
Yeah.
All right. So, let's talk about values for a minute. So, what are value statements? They're central tenants of what the organization is willing and not willing to do in support of its constituents. Sort of some sideboards on how you're going to, how you're going to operate. Values identify the manner in which the organization will carry out its mission, sort of how are we going to do this while we're carrying out the mission and seeking to achieve our vision? Some examples, Tacoma, opportunity, equity, partnerships, and accountability. Having been very involved in that process, these were, these were hard-fought. Tacoma had a very tough recession, and opportunity was a big deal for them in terms of coming out of that. Equity, as I mentioned, a very diverse community, and a community that was learning how to embrace that. Partnerships was very much about, a lot of the constituents involved in that process having something to say about the city's history of maybe not being as good a partner as it could be, and trying to push that up as an elevated statement. And then accountability, and particularly of the city government, was a need there. So, those were all about what was going on in that town three years ago when we did that process. They're very characteristic there. In Portland, inclusion, shared power and governance, relationships, and social sustainability. In King County, equitable and fair, financially sustainable, regionally collaborative, and quality local government.
So, Brian, before you launch into the next slide, this is an area where I sort of have a little bit of a soapbox that I think adds to all of the information that Brian has shared. I am a fan of Jim Collins, who built, who wrote Built to Last and Good to Great and Great by Choice, and one of the things that Collins says about values is that in addition to this broad suite of values, which Brian does a really nice job of setting up, Collins asserts that really great, long-lasting entities have a really small set of core values. And he says core values are three to six, usually less than six, things that drive the organization and are so fundamentally important to the organization that the organization will stop doing something or start doing something rather than violate one of the tenants of those values. And so, organizations can have a significant number of values that really drive and inform how and what they do, but there are relatively few things that you would actually make a decision to do or not do something rather than violate that value, and that's a core value. So, what I'm hoping is that part of our exercise as we work through the strategic plan is to identify if this organization does have core values, what are they? Thanks, Brian, for that.
Well said. So, McMinnville has some existing values, more than six. Citizen participation, communication, courtesy, customer, economy, employees, equality, and intergovernmental relations. Nothing wrong with any of those, and maybe very much sort of some words to live by for the staff. Driven by this process to date and everything we've heard from the community and kind of hearing what those core hours, we might propose a shorter set, and then I have a suggestion about what to do with these. Proposed values might be inclusivity, stewardship, courage, and accountability. With inclusive, inclusivity meaning we are a compassionate and welcoming community for all. Stewardship meaning we are responsible caretakers of our shared public assets and resources. Courage, we are future-oriented, proactively embracing and planning for change that is true to our roots and good for our community. And accountability, we believe healthy civil discourse is fostered through responsive service and clear, accurate, useful information. So, there's a proposal. One thought might be that you might take these that I just suggested or some modification and make them the community values or the city values, while there's some, the list you already have, that is a pretty good list, might be a set of staff principles about staff operations, so that would be a thought. So, reactions to these? These came really, these were chewed on during several of our workgroups and...
I really like them, all of them.
I do, too. I think, you know, the proposed value by itself, for me, is a little bit lacking, but when you have a definition by it, it really goes deep, and it truly includes everything that we've been working on for the last number of years, and we expect to be working on for the future, I think.
I would agree.
Any other thoughts?
I like this one as proposed.
The only thing I wonder is, I know, at least I have felt, in talking about the legacy, that, you know, I'm a newer civic leader. I feel like I'm carrying on a legacy of the previous, and I really feel like part of the reason I decided to do this was because of the first three of those, participation, communication, and courtesy, is really, I think, very ingrained in even at this level, how we do what we do. Even if we disagree, we are courteous to each other and respectful, so I would like to see some element of that wind up in the proposed values as well personally, because I feel like that's a really good representation of...
And maybe a part of stewardship.
Maybe a part of stewardship. I do like what you have, I just want to make sure we don't lose what we, what really does still represent what values we have that were in the old ones, and I do feel like those aren't representatives.
And that doesn't necessarily, that citizen participation isn't staff-driven. I think it's council, more council-driven than staff-driven.
Well, I don't know, Steph, does a lot of participating. I mean, a heck of a lot.
Well, it does, but without, without our, without our support, it's not going to happen. I mean, I guess you could say that of everything, but...
Well, I feel like it kind of is part of inclusivity. It's just, it's just, everybody's included and it's the thought that we're all in this together.
I think Wendy was referring to civility.
Yeah, courtesy.
Courtesy and civility, that I think has been ingrained in us for a while now, to where it really makes it...
Yeah, I think, when I think of what's been really ingrained, civility is probably one of the top things, but I feel that in inclusivity, so I, it's just, anyway, it's not good input.
Okay, that's good, that's good feedback. So, the next step is the Community Strategic Plan Shorette, which is next, it's April 3rd, I think it's Tuesday next week. We're going to review the input so far and start refining and vetting the strategic priorities and really go to work on those, and then shortly after that, the workgroups will go to start working on each of those and developing goals and objectives, and that's the next phase of the process. Thank you.
Thank you, Brian. Again, it's been so much fun to be a part of what's happened so far. It has been very enlightening, so thank you. Okay, next thing that we have on our agenda is a presentation that includes the city manager's annual evaluation, and Sean O'Day is in Carlton this evening, and he's going to be here, so we will move this presentation to a little later in our proceedings this evening. So, at that point, we'll go ahead and give Jeff his city manager's evaluation under the direction of Sean O'Day. With that, we are now to that point in our, in our meeting of public comment, and we would invite anyone to speak on topics other than topics that are already on the agenda, a matter that's in litigation, quasi-juridicial land, use matter, or a matter scheduled for a public hearing at some future date. And we do have a number of comment cards, but I would like to remind that I, we're, I don't, we haven't had our discussion yet whether we want to have a public hearing on RV or if we want to open for comments, once the ordinance has had an opportunity to be vetted. And so, I, what I'd like to do tonight is I'd like to put off any dialogue on the RV discussion and submit to the council that we have another opportunity, that we will have a first reading tonight, discussion, and then have a second reading, and the second reading, if we want to have a public hearing or just open comments, that's up to you. Do you feel comfortable with that?
Yeah, I think public comments would be good. I'm not entirely sure we need another hearing, but maybe we do.
Okay.
Depends on how the others feel.
Okay. Well, then let's go over that at that point in the, so, anyone that would have comments that are not specific to the RV ordinance or the camping ordinance, is there anyone that would like to come before the council this evening to talk about anything other than that? Most of these all say RV, and I would like to have a more thoughtful discussion when we really know what that ordinance looks like. Okay, hearing none, then we will... Okay, now, I just mentioned that we're not going to have any comments on the RV situation tonight, okay?
We're supposed to, because everybody's going to be arrested?
Nope, not tonight, because what we're looking at is we're going to have a first reading this evening, we're going to have an opportunity, once we refine the ordinance, to have public comment at our next meeting, okay?
Yeah, I understand that, but what about subjects, I mean, any other subjects?
Yeah, those would be open. So, RV parking or camping is an item that's on the agenda tonight, and so that cannot be brought up, but anyone that would like to speak on any other topics, I've called for that. Okay? We have three...
I live in 947 Southeast Fourth Street.
We have three minutes, Jared.
I appreciate it, God bless. It's my son Alexander. Can you say hi? Hi, everybody. Yeah, I've been, I've been busy, I haven't been around, I actually work full-time now, so I had to spend a little bit out of, out of my reach to come here tonight. Was fortunate enough to find a babysitter, but I just wanted to come and speak tonight because I haven't been around, so I guess I don't know what's going on. But I don't expect you guys to explain tonight, I just wanted to speak for a minute. I'm not living on the street, but I certainly have an opinion, and I know I'm not going to talk about whatever it is that you don't want us to talk about, which, it's fine. The minutes and the time that I spend reading is probably the best fun that I have, but I'm not going to spend the rest of my evening here because it's boring and I can't have my kids or family, friends, it's not a function for that, but I'm glad that you guys are going to go through your minutes and talk about a specific agenda, but I want to say for the record that from now on, if I come here and you expect for me to fill out a sheet, I'm going to, I'm going to fill out fourteen or fifteen of them on every objective, just because I can say something, because I know a thing or two about one or a thing or two. And I have met everyone in this room that's here on the board and on the sideline, and I would, I would just think that you'd find a better means to maybe pick up an email or a phone, maybe with me, and then maybe we can talk, and I just have a couple of questions, and I know I'm not going to get any time to get answers tonight, but, you guys of all, especially the people that are not in the room, have spent quite a bit of time working on some of these issues, and I would just like to be able to discuss it with you, individually with all of you at some point. I know this year's elections, we've got new judges and we've got new commissioners, and I'm, I'd be proud to talk about it in under three minutes. So, I appreciate you guys' time, and I hope that you can take ours into consideration.
Thank you, Jared. Okay, any other comments this evening? Go ahead.
Hi, my name's Jacob, and, well, you guys know me. So, I try to stick to the, I guess, the smoke and mirrors type of thing that we're doing, but my concern is about the approach that is taken, or maybe not taken, in holding people accountable, people of public official capacity, people that may or may not have taken oaths that they're supposed to uphold, and, you know, like, how, how one goes about holding those people accountable, or even to like words that are spoken in here. I've heard words spoken in here that were not verified and were spoken as of truth, and then I was able to go out and try to verify that information, and I've got the record recorded, but it's longer than three minutes, the phone calls. It's not true. It's not true. How do we hold, how do we, the people, hold you officials accountable? How do we bring up those concerns in a way... the people, hold you officials accountable? How do we bring up those concerns in a way that, you know, like this, maybe, maybe, maybe personal, maybe, you know, outside of the three-minute window, but to bring those up with the evidence, not just something saying, hey, and not getting shut down, somebody that'll look, that will listen, and will, you know, take some accountability maybe, and show a level of professionalism that, I mean, we all, I, I are supposed to maybe look up to within, within the city structure of how to do things, and I just, I don't see, you know, how one, how one can continue this way, without, without the accountability, without the, like, I mean, we all filled out things to talk and we all got shut down. I mean, we got shut down, they went up to the slip and he said, oh, we're not going to have any invitations. You don't know my heart, you don't know what was on my heart today, you can close down one window, you can't close down another one. You can close one door, open another one up. I'm concerned about that. I'm concerned about that accountability. I'm concerned about skating around the laws and trying to subvert the Constitution with a rule or regulation to, to, to really, to discriminate against people against lesser economic status, to be able to target in any way, shape, or form any particular group or subgroup of people and use any type of bylaws or codes or ordinances, any, not just RV or vehicular, any, to target them and move them along as if they're not a part of your picture, not a part of your painting, not a part of what you want and what you see as your community. And I, I don't know how I would be able to or who I'd be able to talk to about that stuff on a personal level, but I could leave my email or something, if anybody would like to, like, to talk about those things, I would like to talk about them more. I really would, and I thank you for your time tonight.
Thank you, Jacob. Go ahead.
My name is Valerie. I'm really also concerned about the ethics in this committee and why there's not anybody, there's no checks and balance system here. It's, you know, smoke and mirrors, it's this and this and this, this is what's happening, and we're going to make laws to hurt these people. And there is no, there's no committee, there's no, other, you know, counties have ethics committees, people that come in and say, well, you know what, we need to look at this before we make decisions like this that could affect a whole group of people. There's no ethics being held to this, this council at all, and it's very concerning to me, and I know it's concerning to a lot of people in the community that can't be here because they can't come in, and so I get to be a voice for a lot of people. It's really sad to see our community leaders acting like this. That's what I want to say. I'm disappointed.
Thank you, Valerie. Any other comments this evening? Hearing none, we will then move on to our consent agenda this evening, and a part of our consent agenda this evening are the minutes of the February 21st, 2018 special, special called Work Session, the February 27th, 2018 special called Work Session, and regular city council meeting. We also have considering a liquor license request for wholesale malt beverage and wine from Roan Street Wine Company LLC located at 2803 Northeast Orchard Avenue, and we have a resolution 2018-12, a resolution establishing advisory or revised sanitation, sanitary sewer user fees and repealing Resolution 2017-07. So, I'd ask if any councillor would request to have anything moved off of the consent agenda. Hearing none, I will ask for a motion.
I so moved.
It has been moved by Councillor Menke and seconded by Councillor Garvin. All those in favor of this, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed by signifying by saying nay. And this, the consent agenda passes unanimously five to five. That takes us to our first resolution this evening, and that's Resolution 2018-13, a resolution awarding the contract for the construction of Cumulus Avenue sidewalk fill-in project. It's Project 2016-11. We'll call on our Community Development Director, Mike Bissett, to present the information for us this evening. Mike?
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. I'd refer you to the brief staff report that's in your packet by Project Manager Larry Sherwood, that summarizes the bid results for this project. This project will fill in the gaps of missing sidewalk along Cumulus Avenue between Atlantic Street and Dunn Place. It's one of the projects that's included in the 2014 Transportation Improvement Bond Measure. Bids were opened and publicly read on March 15th. We had six bidders, concrete solutions, local contractor was the low bidder in a bid amount of $74,632. So, I also refer you to the resolution awarding the contract that's in your packet and a project vicinity map, and unless there are any questions, staff would recommend you adopt the resolution as presented.
Thank you, Mike. Refer to Mike's memo, any discussion among the council on this resolution? Hearing none, I will take a motion for Resolution 2018-13.
So moved.
And a second. It's been moved by Wendy and seconded by Alan. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, signify by saying nay. And that passes unanimously five to five. That takes us to our next resolution, Resolution 2018-14, a resolution approving an intergovernmental agreement between the City of McMinnville and McMinnville Water and Light related to the Three Mile Lane Bridge Replacement Project utility design, and so, Mike, we'll turn that over to you.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. This is the first of two resolutions that's before you this evening related to ODOT's planned project to replace the Three Mile Lane Bridge. As part of the transportation package that was passed by last year's legislatures, they did include project funding of approximately $36 million to replace the Three Mile Lane Bridge. The city has the need to put a sanitary sewer force main on that bridge, and McMinnville Water and Light has the need and interest to put water line and power and fiber conduits on the bridge. ODOT has been cooperative in allowing us to include the utility work in their project. They will manage the construction of that work as, as part of their bridge project, but we need to complete the design of those utilities. OBAC is, OBAC Consulting Engineers is a design firm that is currently serving on ODOT's project team for the project and is on ODOT's approved list for local agency use. We're proposing to use OBAC to do the sanitary sewer, water, and power communication infrastructure design. This resolution that's before you enters, excuse me, this resolution creates an intergovernmental agreement between the city and Water and Light to manage OBAC's time related to that utility design. The city will actually manage OBAC's work in cooperation with McMinnville Water and Light. This is very similar to an intergovernmental agreement we did on Alpine when we managed some of Water and Light's water and power work in association with that project. So, McMinnville Water and Light's commission considered this intergovernmental agreement last week at their board meeting and approved the IGA, and so the resolution you have before you this evening is to formalize that from the city's standpoint and allow the city to sign the IGA. With that, unless there are any questions, staff would recommend you adopt the resolution and approve the IGA as submitted.
Any questions for Mike?
I have one, Mayor.
Alan?
Thank you, Mike. Has this gone public yet as far as the commitment by ODOT to, for the $36 million to go out there? I've missed that, but they're dealing...
They've done a couple press releases, there has been some reporting in the News Register regarding the project. They're at the preliminary design stage for the project. In fact, I'm at a couple meetings this week in Salem related to the project. Once they pass this stage, which is called Design Acceptance Package Stage, they'll move into actual design, and they'll have some public outreach components related to that. Certainly, when the project, which is currently scheduled to bid late 2019, starts construction, there'll be some construction impacts. They'll construct a detour bridge next to the existing structure, move traffic onto the detour bridge, tear the old bridge down, build a new bridge in the same alignment, and then move traffic off the detour bridge onto the new bridge. And so, it's a multi-year project that will include quite a bit of traffic control and public outreach related to how we get back and forth to the hospital during construction. So, stay tuned for that, and we're hitting the project at the right time that we can get the utility work designed, and it really helps us. We have a force main that's under the river now that's decades old and needs to be replaced, and so, it's a good opportunity for, for both us and Water and Light to get some utility work done as that project's taking place.
That force main's going to be up, just below street level, then?
It'll be hung under the bridge, and as will the water line and communication and power conduits.
Thank you.
My understanding, if I'm not, if I'm correct, Mike, is that I think there will be a conduit that's run within the sidewalk or the pavement to handle some of the electric and optics. Is that correct? So, it'll be encased in steel casing, and, and we did have quite a discussion at the Water and Light last Tuesday, and we felt very comfortable, and this is a time to do, end a partnership with the city. It just strengthens our partnership in the things that we're doing.
In the future, there'll be an intergovernmental agreement between the city and Water and Light and ODOT that formalizes how our project gets rolled into their project, how it gets paid for, when we pay the bills, and then it'll also include lighting on the bridge, with the city will be responsible for lighting on the bridge, and it may include some aesthetic elements. As they move through design, we'll have discussions on aesthetics, certainly, as, as it is a gateway into our community.
Could I ask a question in regard to what you just said? I assume that all of this will be accessible to the utilities and to you. You're talking about steel encased cables inside concrete, it worries me a little.
It's pretty common that most, most bridges actually have utilities hanging underneath them.
Well, that I could get. It's being accessible if it's in the sidewalk.
It'll be, well, again, the sidewalk's part of the bridge structure, and the conduits will be underneath the side, for the power and communications will be under the sidewalk area. There'll be junction boxes at certain distances that allow access to get to the infrastructure, but the simple answer is yes, we'll have access to what we need to have access to.
Just water be sure.
Yeah.
Yeah, the alternative for Water and Light was to bore under, and, and they have done that before, and our water line that is existing is old and deteriorating, and so this is a, going to be a good fix that's going to take us for quite a little while down the road.
That must be quite a, quite a temporary bridge going in.
Yes.
Because that's kind of...
It is going to be, it's going to be a project that is going to be disruptive, yes.
If it's going to start tentatively late 2019, how long from that point would you anticipate roughly construction to take?
They're anticipating two-plus construction seasons, so it's probably a two-and-a-half year project total. It's, it's a significant structure. It's, it's 11, the current bridge is 1,100 feet long. Of course, you know, that's a massive floodplain in that area underneath the bridge, and so there's quite a bit of environmental work that's been taking place. ODOT's actually been working on this project for a number of years, and I've been participating on their design team. There, there wasn't funding for construction, so they were going to take it through this current design acceptance stage and then put it on a shelf until we found the significant resources to build it. With, like I said, with the package that was passed last year, they were able to elevate this project to the construction phase. I understand that it's the number-one bridge replacement priority in the region placed by region maintenance staff, and so, ODOT's quite pleased to be able to address this structure. It's, it's, it's time for it to be replaced, so...
The, one other, two other questions, actually. So, the, the current park's master plan has significant improvements in the park underneath where that bridge is essentially that are not funded. I imagine those may become part of a future plan. Is there any possibility for this construction to sort of take that future planning into account? And the second question related to that first question is that the current bridge does not, is not very well set up for bicycle traffic, trying to get off of Three Mile Lane and onto the surface streets that, you know, short of getting onto Highway 18 there, and is there, can that be part of the design plan to improve multimodal access in addition to sidewalks?
It does include bicycle facilities on the new structure. The detour structure will have a wide pit bike path separated from traffic while construction's happening, and so, yes, multimodal is certainly a key component of this project. I think Mr. Davis could get up and speak. To the years we've fought for having this bridge replaced, because it's not a safe structure to try to bike on or even walk on, it feels, it's pretty daunting feeling when you're trying to walk on the pretty small pathway that's on the bridge now, so this will tie nicely into the sidewalk improvements we're doing along Cumulus, and fits well within our transportation system plan for interconnectivity of multimodal transportation options, so...
Thank you.
What was the second question? Did I?
On the park, Marine.
So, we've involved prior Director Pearson and current Director. You're in the discussions related to the project. There is an ODOT right-of-way that the bridge stays within. It does, they do access through the Kiwanis Park to get under the bridge from the park side. They're going to need to use that access during construction. We've had discussions about whether, if they have to do improvements to that access, does that set us up for future recreation opportunities, future possibility of maybe trying to address river access that currently doesn't exist, and so I won't put words in Susan's mouth, but I think we're on the same page. What's happening will not be detriment to, to the park. Yes, no? Okay.
Thank you, Sal. Any other, Wendy?
So, Mike, with the concerns about an earthquake coming, I'm sure they're putting extra, I mean, they're putting that thought into the design. Do you know what level of earthquake this is, this new bridge is supposed to withstand?
That's a technical question that I could find the answer for you, but it will meet the resiliency and seismic requirements that ODOT has on all of their structures, and this is a critical facility, so it will meet that current high-level standard anticipating the cascadey earthquake, so...
That's great, because I know that was a concern with some of our other bridges, and we have a lot of bridges.
There are a number of ODOT bridges that surround us that haven't been currently upgraded to that standard. That's correct.
All right, thank you.
Any other questions? Hearing none, I will ask for a motion to approve Resolution Number 2018-14.
So moved.
Go ahead.
It has been moved by Sal and seconded by Kelly. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, signify by saying nay. This Resolution 2018-14 passes unanimously five to five. This takes us to Resolution 2018-15, a resolution awarding a personal service contract for the utility design services related to the Three Mile Lane Bridge Replacement Project, and so, Mike, if you'd update us on that.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. So, this is the companion resolution to the IGA that you just approved. This formalizes a contract between the city and OBAC Consulting Engineers to complete that utility design work, certainly meeting McMinnville Water and Light standards for their utilities and meeting our standards for the sanitary sewer work, all of it fitting within ODOT's standards for work in their right-of-way. So, unless there are any questions, we would recommend that you adopt the resolution that's presented, formalizing the contract with OBAC Consulting Engineers.
Any questions for Mike? Seeing none, I'll ask for a motion to approve Resolution 2018-15.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved by Alan and seconded by Adam. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, signify by saying nay. This Resolution 20... This Resolution 2018-15 passes unanimously five to five. Now, this takes us to our one ordinance this evening, and the first reading with possibility of a second reading of ordinance number 5049. We now consider the matter of this ordinance, and does any council object to having this ordinance read by title only? Hearing none, then we'll turn to the city attorney for this first reading of ordinance 5049.
This is the first reading of ordinance number 5049, an ordinance relating to the parking of recreational vehicles, motor trucks, and abandoned vehicles, amending McMinnville Municipal Code Chapters 10.04, 10.28, and repealing Code Chapter 15.28.
Thank you, David. We've had an opportunity to hear from Captain Simons on the ordinance, and the new ordinance has been brought to the dais tonight. We've talked about that. Does anyone have questions for Tim, or do we want to just go into a council dialogue at this point? Any questions for Tim? Go ahead, Alan.
Is there a need to add an ordinance?
Alan, pull your mic over, please. Thanks.
She always gets it. Did everybody hear that? I was just wondering, what is the, if you do tow a vehicle that has personal property in it like that, personal furnishings and stuff, let's say it is booted and towed, what's the repercussions and what's the hardship for the PD on that?
Well, we tow other vehicles, not all the time, but we used to tow vehicles all the time. We would inventory them to see if there were anything contained inside that was, I believe at that point it was valued at $500 or greater. And we would keep an inventory of it with regards to what that item was, just so somebody couldn't come back and say that they had something contained within that was $10,000 or something like that. But then, once the vehicle is towed, it's up to the towing company to maintain any property contained therein. And then they have specific guidelines established by law with regards to how long they're supposed to keep those items if someone doesn't come to claim them. And then they have specific guidelines set in place also for basically putting a lien on those items, whether it's the vehicle and/or the contents contained inside.
Just one other, sorry. Just, does that, how about the search? Does that empower the PD to search if necessary?
It's not a search for property, or it's not a search for a commission of a crime. It's basically to, basically look inside the vehicle to determine whether or not there's anything contained inside that is substantial in value.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
Other questions of the captain?
Would this, if we did include the boot and the towing, would it be part of this statute? Or you talk like it would be a broader type of thing that would possibly be put somewhere else.
Other jurisdictions have it located in its own ordinance and not in.
So it would be a separate ordinance, not attached to something like this?
Correct.
Okay. So basically, it's not something we would necessarily have to deal with tonight if we were going to approve this ordinance, but it might be something we want to strongly recommend we look at later. As, my big problem is I just don't really think the fines are going to be enough. But maybe they will be. I'm certainly willing to try it. I personally am fine with the ordinance as it's been presented. I just feel like it probably is a work in process, and we may need a little bit more of a penalty.
Captain Simons, for people who are facing economic hardship, homeless people, for example, is there any real difference in the amount of fine? I mean, it seems to me if someone can't, if someone can't pay, if someone can't afford to have a roof over their head, whether the fine is $50 or $2,500, they're probably not going to be paying it either way.
I'd say that would be an accurate statement.
So making it far more punitive for people who already can't pay, I'm just, I mean, I think we need to take action. I think we need to do something about vehicular camping. I would caution people on the council from targeting specific behaviors with specific punitive actions. If we want to talk about booting cars, let's talk about booting cars and apply that across the board to cars, RVs, everybody in the city. Because that's a reasonable approach to policy. Talking about it in the context of taking people's house, booting it, or towing it to a place where they're going to have to incur other fees to get it out of the impoundment location, I just don't see how that fits in with the inclusivity statement that we're talking about adopting. I mean, I'm not saying, I think we need to do something, for sure. I think we need to, this ordinance is definitely a step in the right direction. But what's making me really uncomfortable is the sense that we're looking for ways to make this more and more punitive on the most vulnerable members of our city.
I guess what I would say in response to you is I'm fine with reducing or maintaining the current penalty at $45, because honestly, I suspect that will be sufficient. My big concern is, as summer comes on, we're going to see a lot more of this, and I think it's going to be necessary at some point to just look at it and say, look, this is the situation, and we need to at least have this level of enforcement. I think it's sufficient to keep people doing what they need to do, you know? Hopefully, I mean, I've been to a lot of homeless meetings, folks, and I know it's not going to result in wonderful things happening. It's just not. Hopefully, we are going to continue to progress and get some kind of RV camping and things like that done. It's just not possible to do it as part and parcel of this.
I just, I just want to say, Kelly, I agree that before summer comes, like sooner rather than later, we need to, we need to pass something. So I don't, I don't mean this as an intention to drag this.
No, I agree. I know that.
Beyond next week or whenever. I mean, I think we need to take care of this as soon as possible. And I think adding in additional provisions is going to make it harder to get it taken care of sooner.
Yeah, as he said, it's going to be a separate provision.
So, but, having said that, the idea of booting cars when they accumulate too many tickets, that kind of thing, I think that is a reasonable conversation to have about policy, just not part of this conversation.
No, I agree.
And I would agree. I think the other piece that we need to be very cognizant of is if we don't have, I mean, what we're trying to do is have a, an ordinance that allows our police department to be more effective.
Right.
I see that we have to have a way to hold some accountability, or we're just going to have them doing a job we've asked them to do with no solution and more of their time chasing, the dog chasing their tail, so to speak. And what will happen, from my perspective, is if we don't have some way of addressing it, we're going to have more neighborhoods in, full neighborhoods in, talking about livability health in their neighborhoods.
I think what we're doing is, it doesn't actually solve any problem. It moves people along on a daily basis, and so it will minimize the impact on any one neighborhood. And the idea that it would also diminish large congregations of campers, which is, I think, where you run into much bigger potential for antisocial behavior and just impacts on neighborhoods, you know, taking an approach that reduces that, I think, is a very favorable thing. So I, I mean, we've probably talked this to death. I don't think any solution we come up with is going to be one that I'm going to feel 100% comfortable with, so I'm okay with voting for something that I'm not fully comfortable with, just so you know.
Okay. Well, we have a resolution in front of us, and again, we have a resolution that has been, excuse me, an ordinance that has been amended a little bit, and so we really don't have that ordinance in front of us intact, do we, David?
Well, we, the ordinance, it comes out of the definition of recreational vehicle. That's the only change, proposed change to the ordinance beyond what was in your packet. And that language was provided for you tonight on the dais, but I would say it was not available prior to tonight's meeting for the general public. Therefore, I'm uncomfortable, if you want to make that change to the definition of recreational vehicle, I'm uncomfortable with that going forward with second reading tonight. If you're comfortable with the language as it was presented in the packet.
Can we do second reading after preventing public comment?
Well, we can't.
I would not feel comfortable with that, just for the record.
The council does not have a requirement by charter or ordinance that ordinances coming before the council for adoption have to have a public hearing or public comment.
Only if something's been amended?
Well, only if it's a land use matter, but even if something is amended by council on the dais, there is no requirement by charter ordinance that the council have a public hearing on this, unless a public hearing is required by statute. And so in the case of a land use hearing, that's required by statute. It's simply, in my experience here, been at the discretion of the council or the mayor to determine when an ordinance that's coming before the council is of sufficient public interest to warrant or be worthy of, that's not the right term either, public hearing.
We have had people come in and make statements while we're looking at ordinances before, and we said no tonight because we're going to look. So I think we've already committed to have an opportunity for them to speak another time. So whether or not we're required to.
We've charged staff with coming back with an ordinance, and that's what we're doing.
Right. So when we do that, we, then we will hear their comments.
So, again, we may be in a situation tonight where if, I think we could set and have public, we could have public comment before our second reading. If we set it out tonight, I think it would be appropriate, gives everybody an opportunity to read and be familiar with the ordinance, if you so desire. But we're going to have a second reading. I think we're pretty well down that path. But we shared that with many tonight, and I just didn't want this thing to run away this evening, because we have a very full agenda, and that's why I did what I did. So, Alan?
Mayor, just in the way of discussion, I'm in agreement with Councilman Peralta on having more of a comprehensive look at the boot and towing possibility, including all cars that accumulate fines and stuff, and not segregate this one aspect of RV camping, vehicular camping.
But that would be part of a separate ordinance.
Right.
I am too.
Okay, thank you, Alan. Wendy, any more thoughts?
Well, I just, with regards to that, what it feels to me like this has brought up the idea that there is a concern about all citations that are given in town, whether or not our police staff have what they need to not be chasing. And so I think it fits much better as a separate discussion about what they need to be able to hold people accountable with regards to adhering to our rules, our ordinances in the city. So, yeah, I agree with that. I think a separate discussion, not targeted at a specific, but targeted at citations and what the escalation is for citations that we have in our ordinances.
Thank you, Wendy. Adam, any?
Definitely in favor of a comprehensive citywide boot program down the road. With that in mind, though, I would still like to see a fine of $100 or more per day, knowing that if we are going to boot, it's going to have to meet a threshold before we do boot. And the purpose of this ordinance was to prevent code enforcement from chasing cars around for nine days on end, and so I would hate for us to have a boot program that takes a month for somebody to get booted because the fine's so low. So in our February 17th packet, there is one city, which was Oregon City, that had a $15 per day fine. Everybody else was in $100 or more. Fourth Grove was the only one at $100. Newburgh was 500. Russian was 250. Albany was 2,500. So I don't feel $100 is, when we're looking at the city as a whole and not just people on hard socioeconomic times, I don't feel $100 is going to be out of, out of range, per se.
So what I, on that issue, what I'd suggest is, it probably would warrant a look at our parking fines and fee schedule across the board, because we may find that compared to those other cities that you listed, all of our parking fines and fees are below that median, whatever that is. And so we can also commit to pulling that data and bringing that back to you for a larger discussion, not just focused on abandoned vehicles, but on all of our parking fines and fees, and how they compare at some future council meeting. It will be here in two weeks, though, I'll tell you that.
No, I fully understand that, but I would be satisfactory.
The question I had was how, what the discussion, the discussion was around the $45, like there was obviously a reason why.
I think that's been.
That's the current bail schedule for abandoned vehicles.
Oh, okay, so it's, we have something in place that.
We do.
Okay.
And we weren't proposing, is this any changes to what was already in the, in the fee schedule or the fine schedule?
I was fine with the way RVs were defined in the original, and I don't see a lot of difference if we take out the eating facility. Didn't it stipulate sleeping?
And I think, did we not talk about including verbiage about fees that would come from another area that, so it wouldn't be a part of, and it's not, but do we make reference that the fees will be found in our schedule of fees? Does that need to be a part of the ordinance?
I don't see why it does. I assume it's assumed that that's where you will derive the fees from, or do we need to say something?
Right now, I believe that most ordinances actually have the fines built into them.
So we do need to put the fine in there?
Well, I think it would probably be best, and at least in my opinion, it would be best to have a fee schedule, so A, B, C, D, and then have that, have those be referenced within, so that you don't have to go back and change any time that a fee needs to be raised.
So we just need to reference the ordinance that has the fee schedule?
Or a, a fee schedule can be adopted by a resolution of the council on an annual basis, and that's.
And that's what I was meaning, is to have verbiage that would show that, to find what the current fees are, go to the schedule of fees, that we would have it embedded in the ordinance.
Okay, yeah, just a reference or whatever.
We currently have that with ORS for traffic violations. The state establishes what the fines are for each classification, and then it's just referenced in each ORS with regards to what level of a violation it is.
Okay, thank you.
Sal, did you have any other comments?
No.
Okay. So we're to a point where, David, do you feel comfortable you know what we want in this ordinance? Is there a significant change?
Well, I'm not sure that I'm, based on what Counselor Makey just said, there's the definition of recreational vehicle that was provided in your packet, which.
How does it, could you read it to me?
Yes, so I can tell you how it differs. So what was in the packet said recreational vehicle means any vehicle with or without motive power that is designed for human occupancy and to be used temporarily for recreational, seasonal, or emergency purposes, and is further defined by rule by the director. So we would, we would strike it from, we would end it basically with a period at emergency purposes. What was put in front of you tonight expanded on that a little bit and drew, impart from those rules that were adopted by the agency to better define what a recreational vehicle is. So it says recreational vehicle means a vehicular-type unit that, one, contains sleeping facilities, two, is designed or used for human occupancy, or as temporary living quarters for recreational, seasonal, or emergency use, and three, has its own motive power or is mounted on or towed by another vehicle.
That is a better definition.
And it seems to be a clear definition. It defines some of those terms better.
The only problem with that was the inclusion of the word director.
Yeah, so we'll, so with that, with what was put in front of you tonight on the dais, the one change to that, that's what will come forward to you in the, in the ordinance for the second reading.
Okay. Any other dialogue or discussion? Hearing none, I will, I will ask for a motion to pass ordinance none. Hearing none, I will ask for a motion to pass ordinance number 5049, or we've had a first reading.
Right, so we're asking for a motion to pass it on to the second reading.
I'll make a motion to pass it on to the second reading.
Hold on a second, I'm sorry, point of order.
Yeah, second meeting at the, second reading at the next meeting.
That's what I was.
Yeah, and so that, we should clarify that for a second reading on.
And do we have to say something about taking comment or no?
April 10th?
April 10th.
Yeah, and you're right, and the council should decide whether you're simply going to, if you're going to have a public hearing on this issue.
Well, not a public hearing, but.
Focus hearing, testimony on this.
Public comment?
You're going to allow public comment on it.
So Alan, public comment?
Yeah, I would move to allow public comment, but not a public hearing.
Okay, Kelly?
Yep.
Wendy?
Yes.
Adam? Okay, so, we're opening up a few things, but so, any comment from staff?
No, other than, you know, it raises a larger question about council policy on holding public hearings for ordinances, which you don't have. That's another issue.
But we don't, this will not be a public hearing, this is public comment. That's what we're talking about.
I mean, it's essentially the same thing. When you have a public hearing, it is cleaner for the minutes to indicate that the comments you're taking are dedicated to just that topic that's before the council for consideration as an ordinance. If you take it as public comments, you're still getting input from the public.
But we're not, we're not having a dialogue, which, that dialogue.
Public hearing doesn't require a dialogue either. You can simply take testimony.
Public hearing, though, we have to notice for 30 days, right?
Only, only if you matters.
So, we wouldn't have to notice this?
No, you simply put it, you put it in the agenda as a public hearing as opposed to public comment. And it makes it clear for folks that you will be taking comments because it's out of order for you typically. You don't take public comment on matters that are on the agenda, so.
Can we still limit the time and everything?
Absolutely.
Okay, let's put it as public hearing.
So, just as an observation, in the public hearings, the thing that I have seen that seems different between a public comment and the public hearings is the, I mean, the process of the public hearing is the testimony and then the counterpoint, but that's for just for land use matters?
That's right, that would be for your quasi judicial land use type matters. This is not.
Would be a different type of.
This is very modified.
Yeah, it's like a legislative hearing.
Okay.
Basically, you're giving testimony.
Just giving testimony, and you're capturing another.
With a time limit?
Like counter, like.
No. No, you can structure that however you want to, you can structure it, we want to hear from the people in favor first and oppose next, or you can just have it be wide open, and whoever signs up can come and testify in whatever order.
Okay, would we notice it in the newspaper, just so that we get?
You could, if you chose to. You're not, you would not be required to for this type of matter, but you could if you chose to.
Should we?
Could I just ask a question, because I was pondering David's comment? Is there anything that's going to be said in the public comment that will change our minds from what we've made up tonight? I mean, if we're going to take a bunch of public comment and then vote anyway, the way we want to, I'm not entirely sure it's going to serve any real purpose. We have had quite a bit of opportunity for people to testify about this already.
How, I'll let you answer, I don't know.
That's a policy question, not a legal one. You could legally act tonight, I would be concerned because of the comments.
I'm not saying do a second reading tonight, I'm just saying I'm not sure that we really need a public, another public hearing.
Well, if we, I guess the thing.
I think we do, because we've said, we've told people that's.
I guess we did tell them that.
And that's what, I mean, normally, well, we have before, where we say you can't comment in the public comment section on anything tonight, you make that later when we're talking about it. And we said no, because we're going to listen to you later. So I feel like we need to listen to them later.
It's all about transparency.
Yeah, but I think we need to think about that in the future before we start, you know, to do this on a regular basis is a little bit unproductive.
Yeah.
In fact, it's really unproductive.
Just follow through with what we said we were going to do.
You know, Kelly.
We did tell them that we would listen.
That's a good point, because, you know, there could be points raised on both sides of the issue that we would listen to. It could influence the way we actually end up voting on it. I mean, I've heard things tonight that's made me think, so it's.
Okay, so we will then move our second reading of ordinance 5049 to our next city council on the 10th of April, correct?
Need a motion and a second for that.
Okay.
I still move.
Second?
It's been moved by Kelly and seconded by Sal, that we move the second reading of ordinance 5049 to April 10th. All in favor, so indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes unanimously. Okay, we are to a point where it maybe looks like Sean isn't going to make it?
I don't know. I haven't heard from him lately.
Well, we'll just head down and see if he makes it tonight. Reports from councilors on committee work and board assignments, we'll start with Alan.
McMinville Housing Passport, passport meets tomorrow, is that right?
10 o'clock.
Can we get the library glass thing to hang it around his neck?
Then you drop like from the floor.
Okay, anyway, 10 o'clock tomorrow.
You guys are already fully up to date on urban renewal, so nothing to report in addition.
Adam?
Nothing for YCOM, our next meeting's the 12th, and that'll be our budget meeting and E-Board meeting, so in two council meetings, I'll have something for you.
Okay. Sal?
I just got my first assignment, Mr. Mayor, thank you very much, Board of the Mid Valley Council of Governments, looking forward to that. So, nothing to report yet, I haven't sat in the committee yet.
And Kelly?
Affordable housing tomorrow, let's see, I think we're doing CET's and inclusionary zoning, and I think there's a couple of other issues that we'll be discussing.
And you want to update a little on Visit McMinville?
Oh, why don't you update on Visit McMinville?
Visit McMinville, we had an opportunity to, a good discussion around our budgeting process and the financial piece, and looking forward to what our budget's going to look like for the remainder of the year. They're making great headway on their hitting that contingency number. We're, in the low period, we're utilizing our line, but things are just moving in a very positive direction. Good responses from kind of in-kind media, and we're looking at the summer season and the things that are going to be happening there. Just, again, a good positiveness of things, I think, being appropriately going down the road where we need to be. The one big discussion area was a struggle we're having with having local representation with Travel Oregon and the funds that come through them. The county really doesn't have a structure, thus, we don't have a voice around the table when it comes to the entities around the state that participate in the dollars that come with the wine country licensing and the other dollars that are coming out. So, we're working on that and trying to provide.
Trying to get restructured, so we're not necessarily under that umbrella of Yamhill County.
Just a couple of other things, just to remind those that tomorrow at 4:30 to 7:30, the Atticus is open, and this is the one that we can go to. Many of us were invited to spend the night, but it was well over our $50.
$500?
And so, but this will be opened.
You can't have any fun.
So tomorrow, it will be an opportunity to go through and really have an opportunity to see the uniqueness of that entity. Also, there's an invitation for members of the council to meet with the ribbon cutting of the Gospel Rescue Mission, and that's going to be next week, is it Wednesday?
Second, or, let me look.
The second, it's probably, I think, the third.
Maybe it's the third.
I'm out of town, so, oh, it's the fourth, okay. And again, just to see, and I think it's very, in talking to Dave Huggleberg this afternoon, you know, we are looking at 75 beds by the end of the year that really has some substantial weighting in those that need to be cooled down in the summer and those that need to be warmed up in the winter. And it's a pretty open format there, and it's an asset that isn't being utilized, and it's a process that is well getting to be very close to a million dollars in public and private dollars have come to make that thing come to fruition. And so, again, I think, you know, with all the time and effort, and we're looking for emergency and, you know, short-term housing that gives people an opportunity to transition to something else, we ought to be a part of that and just look at it and be there. So I open that up for anyone that would like to attend.
Yeah, actually, they have broken ground, that's interesting. It's going to be a pretty good-sized building they put in, so it's pretty exciting. You might go over and take a look.
Okay, Tim, any reports from the police department?
We have two who just started the academy last week. One will be graduating mid-April, and then another one will be attending, starting mid-April as well. We have one position that we're still hiring for.
Thank you. Susan?
I do have one thing, Mayor and councilors. As many of you know, I think one of the challenges on my plate when I arrived here was looking at the long-term financial stability for the Kids on the Block program. It's been something off in the horizon that we've known has been a problem. And Janet Adams and I have been talking a lot about that, and we've been working with the KOB Inc. Board, and we recently released an RFP funded by the KOB Inc. Board to do an assessment of the KOB Inc. program that will provide us a financial roadmap for the next 30 years, and also look at best management practices, needs in the community, and do an overall assessment of the program. So we're looking forward to working on that, and happy that the KOB Inc. Board was willing to fund that, and you'll be hearing more about that as we get the results of that assessment back.
Thank you, Susan. I think that's something that's been on many of our minds, is you were looking at that long-term sustainability of that program, because we're doing such good work. Scott?
Nothing for the council tonight.
Okay, Heather? Mike? Melissa?
David?
And Jeff?
Just one thing, if you noticed on one of Brian Scott's slides, he identified the timeframe for the charrette on April 3rd as from 10 to 1:30. I would say that was aspirational on his part. We've actually advertised the meeting to begin at 9:30.
Thank you, that makes you feel so much better.
Yeah, so I do think he believes it will not take, it's budgeted from 9:30 to 2:30. I do think he feels like three to three and a half hours is all it will take, so if we start at 9:30, we won't be still working until 2:30, but I just want to let you know that was his hope and not how we've posted the meeting.
Thank you, Jeff. Again, a part of our discussion this evening was a presentation by Sean O'Day of the COG as we completed the annual evaluation of Jeff, and so do you, we'll just push it off to.
Well, so here's what I would suggest. I think Sean adds a lot of value to the conversation and can certainly facilitate the discussion. I also know that his schedule is such that it might be a couple of months before we get him back here, because he's got some scheduled military duty coming up, so he's going to be gone for at least a full month and change. I think he was well out into May before he could be here for another Tuesday. I would actually, I could make a few introductory comments, and I would welcome some conversation tonight, if the council's comfortable moving ahead without a facilitation. So, what I would say by way of introduction, I trust you've read through the material that Sean has provided, it's identical in content to the approach that the council used for my six-month evaluation. It includes a 360 evaluation. The pool of participants for the 360 is a little bit larger than it was, which I expected would be the case as I spent a little bit more time here, got to work with more people on a regular basis, again, got good feedback. I felt, I mean, the things that I paid particular attention to as I went through this is that the assessment of the council in the formal evaluation was incredibly positive and gratifying, and I think it largely matched my own assessment of my own performance, and so I think we are thinking the same, both in terms of areas of success and some areas where I might be able to provide some more attention. I think that likewise, the 360 evaluation was overall positive, and I think a fair assessment from the stakeholders that we engaged in that process. I'm thrilled to be here, I'm proud of the work that we do as an organization, and appreciate the trust that you have placed in me and by extension in the team that supports us all here. I'd welcome any particular comments that you might have as we work through it. I do want to mention that I asked Sean to do a salary and compensation survey as part of the exercise this time around, not in expectation of moving anything forward, but just to try to set a comparable context to where I am. I think by and large, I am fairly compensated and within the market. There are two areas that I appear to be lower than the comparables who responded, and there are some who did not respond. One is the area of deferred compensation, where while I'm within about one, I mean, less than one and a half percent away from the average salary of the jurisdictions that responded, I'm almost 20% low in terms of deferred compensation, and in terms of vacation leave benefit, I'm about 20% low in that area as well. I'm not asking for anything specific, I just want to identify those things. My employment contract also includes some specific language about my relocation and move here to McMinville. That's done and over with, and so at the very least, I would suggest we should amend my employment contract to delete the sections about moving allowance and moving reimbursement, that sort of thing, just to have it reflect the current relationship that we have. With that, I'm happy to hear any additional comments. If the council wants to have some discussion or has any questions of me, I'm happy to do my best to answer them.
I think a couple of things that I will start out with. Number one, I really appreciate this process that we go through. It is much more complete, it's much more easy to navigate than what we have done in times past. We were on the verge of going with a consultant that was going to charge us $25,000 to come up with a process, because we just had an antiquated process when we were working with Kent, but, you know, we were going on 25 years and it just happened, and we found it very difficult with our previous city manager to evaluate, given the old form. And so, through Jeff's help and through COG's help, we've come up with this that seems to be, the values and the responsibilities are, I think, in line with the position. And so, the one piece is that out of seven individuals, we only had four responses, and we have some newness on the council, we understand that, but I am going to make a charge that this becomes a priority when we do it. We've got to do this. It gives you an opportunity to share your, what you see as strengths and what you see as weaknesses, and a dialogue. There's a number that you can rank one to five, and then there's an opportunity to put comments in, and the comments are very helpful, I think, as Jeff has looked at that, because one to five is just one to five, but comments are helpful. As I've read this, and Jeff and I have had an opportunity to review this, though, job well done. I, you know, I know he's not asking for us to take a look at any of the benefits or salaries, but I would, if any of you would entertain, I would take a look at being able to bring deferred compensation up a bit and take a look at his PTO or paid time off to come up to. time off to come up to averages. He brings, he brings experience to the table that isn't being completely incommensurate with those of his peers, and so, those are two things that I would take a look at, and I'm just going to step out and say, I think the average deferred compensation is $9,170, I would say he's at this particular time $7,665. Bringing him up to $9,000, I think, would be appropriate, puts him very close to that average, and then bringing him up on, on leave to 25 days is the average, is that correct? And I would say that that would be things that we would ask him to do. I know initially, he had so much to do, and we really wanted to have him focus with the staff, but looking at the 360 and, and the, the, what he's done to bring the teamwork and the partnering back, I think it is appropriate to at least have a discussion, so I throw those things out to you. So, I'll just turn it open to anyone that would like to share any comments with Jeff, and so...
I certainly think the compensation and the leave proposals are definitely a good idea.
Okay.
I agree. I mean, I think that, I appreciate having the data so we can evaluate it, and it seems like getting him to a $9,000 for the deferred compensation and up to the average for leave is reasonable.
Okay.
And I, I'll make a comment also, I've really enjoyed working with Jeff, I think he's came into a tough situation, and he's handled it really well, and some of the, a couple of comments that I made on the, the survey just had to do with things, I think, that you inherited, that you're trying to catch up on, you know, getting your systems in place with regards to employee evaluations and processes and things like that, but I know that they're on your radar, so, I've been really pleased with how you have worked with your team and with us. Thank you.
Any other comments?
Initially, when I saw the days of leave, I was thinking maybe some of those bigger leaves were cities that had assistant city managers, but after looking at this chart again and again, I'd definitely be in favor of bumping you up to the averages, I've really enjoyed working with you on the council, on the chamber, and appreciate your insight in a diverse situation.
Jeff, I hadn't worked with you very long, but, but as near as I can tell, you're really good at leading from behind. I have met with most of the, all of the top staff on your team, and you're clearly well-respected, and I appreciate a leader who isn't necessarily out in front, but who is a little bit more behind the scenes. Since I'm new to the process of, of this public salary conversation, the idea of talking about it is a little foreign to me, and so, is it the same type of conversation that the council's had with each employee, that, that changes in benefits and salary are discussed?
We only have responsibility for the city manager, and then all the other discussions happen through Jeff going down.
Okay. Then I don't really have any comment on, on the other part of it, but if that's the normal process, I certainly think you're above average as a city manager, so...
And I wouldn't say that we have been as transparent as we are, but Jeff really wants us to be transparent. In the ability to have a discussion around his, his assessment, the 360, he really wants that out in the open, where we've had others that, where we go in and have the one-on-one and the presentation with everybody's input, but it's not so much public knowledge, but Jeff is so willing to, he wants it to be very transparent from his, his and my conversations, and, and I'll follow his lead if he likes it that way.
My only other comment is, I think that kind of transparency really speaks well for you, that you would encourage that, and generally, my bias is against sort of overly rewarding people at the top of any organization, but I don't feel that that's the case in, in this particular situation. I think, I think that, that a fair compensation for a city manager for the work that you do is certainly...
Especially when we're looking at averages.
Yeah, yeah.
He'll have plenty of time to prove even greater things for us, so... Any other comments?
Scott, do we need to look at this, I mean, to Sal's point, do we need to look at this in, in, from a perspective of what is happening on the whole in the city with regards to salaries, or...
And I'll defer to Jeff.
Maybe Jeff, you can answer that?
So, a couple of things, one is, we have, we have, so, on the leave accrual, we have a schedule that, that grants leave accrual based on seniority in the organization, and I'm placed as if I had been here for eight years, and so, some, something that would get me closer to the average of the market for city managers would be to simply put me in our existing accrual schedule as if I had more years in service here in McMinnville, so it wouldn't be a one-off from our system, it would just be placing me in the system that recognizes my career experience.
Okay.
Second, in terms of deferred compensation, in, in Oregon, in particular, and in generally in the city management profession, employer contributions to deferred compensation are typically only related to the chief executive's position, it's not a benefit that's granted typically to other employees, and, and at least here, it's not. I, I don't think it's been granted in any of the other local government jurisdictions where I've worked, except at the city manager's position, so it tends to be a city manager's benefit. It is relatively common in the profession to have a deferred comp, in part, that recognizes the, I think, the executive-level responsibility, and while McMinnville, with one exception, has an experience of long tenure, the, the tenure in the profession isn't necessarily that long, and I say, so I think that kind of benefit has evolved, recognizing that the reality is that folks move around, sometimes move between states, you know, there's a challenge in terms of providing adequate retirement benefit in some, some of those cases, but in any case, when we look at the Oregon comparables, there seems to be a higher, higher level of deferred compensation for city managers.
Okay.
Good questions, Wendy. Any other comments?
Just...
Hearing none?
Thank you.
We will...
You've done a great job, hey.
Go ahead.
I just want to say...
She was going to say something nice, we want to hear that.
That was just a closing...
No, he's just trying. I know, I know, it's like, I just wanted to say, he's done a great job, and we really are thrilled you're here.
Hearing none other, we will go ahead and adjourn, and thank you for this evening, everyone.